I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, March 20th. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brockie. We are missing John Ashmead this evening. We have Peter Tensing, Paula Cole, and I'm Christine Malick. We are also joined by Superintendent Steve Unowski and Student Board Representative Emma Nellenberger on the end. And I would like to remind us tonight of the Richfield Public Schools Commission Statement. Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel. We will keep this in our minds as we work together this evening. We'll start with review and approval of the agenda. Is there anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie and a second by Ms. Cole. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. So we will move on to information and proposals and the superintendent's update.
Alright, so we have a large round of information updates, beginning with our Richfield Public Schools American Indian Education update. Just as a reminder, the state of Minnesota provides opportunities for American Indian Education Funds. And last year was our first year applying for funds for the American Indian Education Program. And our team is here to share with us some of the actions and an update on the American Indian Education Program. So Dr. Will Hight, please begin. Grab the microphone right there.
Their nerves just shot up when I said microphone. Good evening Chair Malick, Superintendent Unowski, board members, and audience members. We're excited to give you an update of what we've been doing for the American Indian Education. And I'm just gonna start off by saying that one of our very first things that we've done this year is to hire our Native American outreach worker in October of 2017, which is months earlier than last year, which was closer to January 2016. So we're excited to have someone onboard that reaches out to the family. And I will let Sarah introduce herself and give you a little bit of an update about our identified numbers of students and as well as the identified tribal nations that are represented in our district. And then also she will give you an update about some of her activities this year.
Alright, hello everyone. Thank you for having me. I have identified 96 students district-wide who identify as at least part Native American. This is found through synergy and also through self-identification. The students would come up and tell me themselves they want to be added on the list. From those 96, we have 14 so far. It says 13 up there, but we just got someone else to turn it into form, who have turned in the 506 form, which we need for funding. Of those forms, we have the following tribes represented. The Turtle Mountain Band of Chippewa, the Bad River Band of Chippewa, Fond du Lac Band, Menominee Nation, Boys' Fort Band of Chippewa, Red Lake Nation, White Earth Nation, Sisseton Wapatin Eote, St. Croix Band, Standing Rock Sioux Tribe, and Minnesota Chippewa. Here are some examples of the things that were done this year. There's a picture of an information table that was set up at one of the kindergarten registration nights with books purchased from our funding. They are all Native authors. I believe there's only one that isn't a Native American author. So it's really good we got those out in all of our media centers in the district. I've also facilitated and formed an American Indian Parent Advisory Group, arranged family events and meetings, connected with students and families, and I've also been at conferences at STEM and at the high school. This August 2017, I will be involved with the student registration and identification of Native American students and families. I also provided presentations to all the 6th and 9th grade social studies classes this year.
So one of the things that Sarah and I do is we meet weekly to kind of give some parameters and guidelines around some of the activities that we need to do to meet our funding requirements. But it's been great to have Sarah here because the families have really connected to her and she's been really active in doing those blackboard calls, doing a lot of personal telephoning, lots of letters. You'll see another slide a little later where you'll see numbers of families that are starting to attend our parent meetings. You'll see that the first one, we had very low numbers. That was before Sarah was here. And so you'll see those numbers increase because I think, again, it's really important to have someone they can culturally identify with. So right now, this is where we are with our funding for state and federal funds coming in. Currently, we have state funding through the American Indian Education Program. Shirley Kampa at MDE is our contact person. That brings in roughly about $48,000. A lot of that goes to our salaried outreach worker. And then the other amounts are for our college visit, family nights, activities, books. So we have some culturally relevant things in our libraries. And then our future funding, we're going after the Title VI. It used to be Title VII. They've changed that, so it's Title VI now. For Indian Education Federal Funds, we need a threshold of 10 for eligibility. That's why we need those 506 forms where it is documented affiliation and membership into the tribal nations. Right now, we have, it says 13, but as you heard, we actually have 14 now, so every day one more. So that's where we're going with that. And that funding opens up at the end of the month.
A big part of the funding requirement is forming an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. And we successfully formed our first-ever American Indian Parent Advisory Committee in Richfield history, so that's a really big deal. The parent committee is composed of parents who are of the American Indian or Native American students that attend Richfield Public Schools. They meet monthly with me and they serve as an advisory role for the American Indian Education Program, and they help me plan and hold family events. None of them could be here tonight, but our chairperson is Lisa Turgen. Her son goes to RSTEM. My co-chair is Rebecca Clays and her daughter goes to Centennial. And then our third member is Emily Midthon and she has children at two of Richfield's schools, RSTEM and RMS. And they did approve the Transmittal of Resolution, which was signed and submitted on the 22nd of February.
So you may have remembered, and thank you Superintendent Unowski for signing that. It is required by MDE when we submit that Transmittal of Resolution. And it means that our Family Parent Advisory Group is saying that the district is moving in the right direction to support our students and families who are of Native affiliation. So this is the family involvement update, and you can see the numbers with that one person that showed up, and that was actually Lisa Turgen. And she and I had a lovely conversation and she also kind of let me know, here are some things that you might want to think about doing. And then in October, when Sarah came onboard, you can see those numbers have increased. And again, we've been trying really hard to get the word out within the community that, hey, we have an American Indian Education Program. Please join us. So it's starting, it's moving in the right direction. And then we have some remaining goals for this year. One is to have a table and be represented at the Community Health and Wellness Expo in April. There also, the Parent Advisory Committee would like to see an end-of-year family night, so again inviting a larger portion of the entire community in. And then working on a college visit for kids on campus through the U of M or at the U of M. We have in development an American Indian Education website. And when we move to that new platform, that will go online, but things are in documents and ready to be uploaded. And then also Sheridan Hills has asked that we have an information booth at their Festival of Nations. So, any questions?
I have one question, just to recap. I think you already stated this, but I just want to make sure I understood correctly. So you were discussing the funding mechanisms?
Yeah.
And I think you said that the federal, I can't remember if it was the federal or state funding now, but that there was one of those funding buckets that essentially was covering the entire FTE?
Yes, yes, that's our state funds.
Yes.
And then the federal funds. And for federal funds, so the way the state works is it looks at our numbers through Mars and who all have self-identified. And then the federal funds that we will be applying for at the end of March, those are through the 506 forms. And in order to have the numbers there, we have to have completed 506 forms to bring in those dollars.
Got it. So am I understanding correctly that in terms of a funding stream, having Sarah onboard is actually more than paying for Sarah's position?
Yes.
But we're actually, so not only is she doing great things for engaging our families, but she's basically paying for herself and herself?
Yes, yes.
Yep. No, it's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned 96 students have, you've identified 96 students, but we have 14 forms. So what is the process for following up on that to have more families participate?
Of the 96 students that identified, I found most of them on synergy and most of them are multiracial. So some of them who I have approached have told me they aren't able to fill out the form. It does require a tribal ID number. And there was one student, for example, who told me, he said, "I gave it to my mom and she can't fill it out because she doesn't talk to my dad and that's my, my dad's a Native person." And I was like, okay, well, that's understandable. But I found that getting those forms filled out is a lot easier when I catch the people in person to fill them out. So that's why we're hoping in August, in those signup days, that I'll be able to catch the parents as they're coming in and then they'll fill out the forms. But I have been sending them home a lot, so.
We've also put them at all the schools, so we know when new families are enrolling with us, that that is the site of intake. And so we've also connected with all of the school secretaries, because usually they are the first touch point, to say, here are the 506 forms. If you notice that they are self-identifying, please also give them a 506 form. If you want Sarah to come out to the building or connect with the family, take down the name and phone number, and then she follows up with them.
I was just gonna say really quickly how impressive it is to see that increase in attendance over a really short period of time, particularly when, if we're talking about 96 students that have been identified at the district level, to have 20 families coming out is a really impressive turnout. So kudos for the good work that you've done, because I know it takes a lot to make that happen. And then I think the other thing I was just going to say is, you know, if there is ever a meeting where it would be helpful to have a board member or two to come, you know, be present based on a topic that you all are discussing, to certainly let us know, because I know there have been other family groups where we have done that before and I think would welcome the chance to spend time with you all.
Thank you.
So just before we transition, so just as feedback to the board, as you all have pushed us as administration to provide an environment where all belong, the American Indian Funds have been available from the state for quite a period of time. But at the board's vision, we have worked to make sure that we have a Native American Outreach Worker, to make sure that we are engaging our families to different levels. And as Dr. Tensing noted, money is available from the state or from the federal government to support our efforts in those areas. And so at the board's discretion, we have aggressively pursued those opportunities so we can create that environment that we're all looking for for our students. So thank you to Ms. Jespersen and thank you to Dr. Will Hight.
Thank you.
And Dr. Will Hight will stay up there and continue with the next presentation about dual-language immersion.
I just want to say thank you, Sarah. Alright, and I'd like Tia Clayson to come and join me, since this is a partnership now. A lovely partnership.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Unowski, and audience members. We are here to provide you with an update of the Dual Language Immersion Program here in Richfield. We'd like to start with a general enrollment update. If you take a look, on the right-hand side as we do this will be our current numbers and then on the left-hand side is what our anticipated numbers are for 17-18. I'm excited about these numbers here. We have currently 43 freshmen in our Dual Language Immersion Program. If you notice, as sophomores, we're retaining nearly all of them and we are adding 45 new freshmen.
The next several slides will be sort of enrollment current and then enrollment projections. And we set them up the same way, so on the, with the two numbers you'll see to the right of the sort of slash mark, those are our identified English learners. And I'm gonna explain a little bit more, but probably on the very last slide. So just note that on the projected numbers for 17-18, there is an asterisk and there is a reason for that.
So for the middle school, you can take a look at the enrollment. There is a bit of a dip in 6th grade, but we are up in numbers for 7th and 8th grade. And again, the asterisk is an estimate of our L numbers and a lot of that is due to the exit criteria from the state that's changing.
So for those of you that are familiar, our multilingual learners take access for Ls tests. Those standards, the standard or score setting is changing. And so some of the numbers look like they've decreased this current year, but we exited a number of our students out of sort of EL programming, so they're reflected over on the left side. So like in the 65-27, some of those 65 used to be part of our English service, now they are not because they've exited program. The projection for 17-18, I still am using those same numbers because in this state of Minnesota has not yet set the cut score in order to be able to exit students from EL programming.
Finally, it's our enrollment update for RDLS. The numbers are kind of all over the place, but if you take a look at the totals, it is kind of mirroring what we're seeing in our elementaries for next year. But that'll change.
And we're basing our projection for kindergarten, so the 15 identified multilingual learners or L students are coming from our identified pre-K students right now.
So I'm excited to talk about the expansion at Richfield High School, the Dual Language Program at Richfield High School. The seven-period day provides an opportunity for us to examine the Dual Language Program and to see how we are servicing our students. And we want to make sure that what we are requiring and recommending builds a strong program for student success, because our end goal is for as many students as possible to earn as high of a SEAL of Literacy as possible and to ensure that they are both bilingual when they leave us. So our recommendation is to continue to require two courses in order to remain in dual language. Those courses would be Spanish Language Arts and a DLI elective beginning in 17-18. And the decision was made to move the second required course out of social studies for a few reasons. First off, it is accommodating those who wish to take AP and CIS courses, which can't be taught in another language. And that translates all the way down to 9th grade, since we are transitioning to a full year of human geography. We will also be offering AP Human Geography. Secondly, it's extremely difficult to teach American history, which has so many primary source documents in Spanish. And so when you're, you know, when you're offering a course in Spanish, you want as many authentic Spanish documents as possible. And so we would be relying on translations of primary source documents, which makes it a little inauthentic. And so it's easier for us to build a course, a humanities course, or other electives that would be able to bring in really authentic Spanish texts and have that rich language experience. We recommend two courses, which is a little bit different than what other districts require in order to better prepare our students to be bilingual. And also to be as successful as they can on the SEAL of Literacy. And frankly, when it comes down to it, you know, in a lot of our conversations, if you offer less than two courses, it really ceases to be immersion. Yep.
Strong immersion. The other for that elective course is that in the social studies portion, we were finding that she was, the teacher was trying to hit all those social study standards, as well as embed some of those linguistic pieces. And it was a lot to embed into that. And some of the students were also questioning. What we were seeing from both of our high school immersion teachers, they had commented that, you know what, writing is still a domain in Spanish that is a little bit, we could strengthen that. So another part of this move to an elective course, it can still be within a social studies realm or an elective, but then she can really focus and drive a lot of that writing and linguistic piece, a little bit differently than when it was fully having to meet all of those social study standards. So those will still exist in another form, but this way we can really push on that language. Which brings us to the SEAL of Literacy. So Minnesota has adopted, and I'm sorry, you have, should have some handouts that explain the Minnesota bilingual and multilingual seals and world language proficiency certificate. So you'll, pieces that are in this handout will be covered in the next two slides. But if you want to read up a little bit later and go over that again, you have that. You also have a handout that does show the legislation from Minnesota State Statute, as well as the certificate or seals that can be earned, the proficiency level of language, sort of a description that is taken, and then how many semester credits that one could earn from the Minskew system. So Minnesota adopted the SEAL in 2014. It is recognized by the Minskew system and semester credits will be awarded through that system. The University of Minnesota is still in conversation with MDE. They have not decided yet to recognize the SEAL. And they have a CIS course, so that conversation continues. As soon as we hear, we will definitely update people. 24 states, including Washington DC, have adopted the SEAL. And one earns a SEAL by showing proficiency in two languages, English and another. You do not have to pass an MCA to show English proficiency, but what you need to do is earn your ELA high school credit and graduate from high school in the English portion. So our multilingual learners do not have to pass out of or exit EL service in order to show that they have met proficiency in English. They have to earn their ELA credits and graduate from high school. And then students have to show proficiency in Spanish or French or German. So the SEAL can be earned by DLI students, world language students, as well as our multilingual students, and our American Sign Language students. On the next slide, you'll see the SEAL levels off to the left. So there's platinum, gold, and then a world language proficiency certificate that can be earned. The middle column shows the ACTFOL, which stands for American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages. So that shows the proficiency level. So platinum equates to advanced low or higher. A gold SEAL is intermediate high and a world language proficiency certificate is intermediate low. And then you can see on the far right, the Minskew credits that can be awarded for those SEAL levels. We are in conversation with the high school about, you know, what does it look like on a diploma or a transcript, having a section that says awards and honors and being able to show that there, so it travels with them. Students do have three years within graduation to request those SEAL credits, should they go to a Minskew system, university or college.
So they earn the SEAL upon graduation?
My quick question was with the other states, the 23 other states, is this a reciprocity type of a deal, where if Minnesota is recognizing it, that we can have confidence in other states that are participating?
So confidence, I might not go that far. I can't speak for all the other states. We have also asked MDE, specifically Ursula Lentz at MDE, she oversees world languages and immersion. We have also asked that question. You know, there's always this thought that we think so. But honestly, we have been saying to folks, if you know that you're going to travel out of state or go to an out-of-state school, you definitely want to call or make sure that counselors are calling or we can help do that to make sure that if you're going to ask for these. And granted, we don't have students that are going to be doing this quite yet. And so we're also saying in three years from now, when we have that first group graduating, what does it look like at that point in time? Hopefully that will be a much more articulated in a form that says all state colleges and universities would accept.
Yeah, and this is really around, the choice for the students is based on, are they pursuing CIS courses? I mean, I guess I'm thinking if I was a student at Richfield High School, it would seem like an equivalent choice between a SEAL of Literacy or a CIS course, because again, there you're talking about Minnesota-based college credit.
And CIS especially for the U of M, because that's who the course is given through. I did ask that question to residents as well. Why would one take a SEAL or an assessment for this versus a CIS course? And the CIS course will give you college credit. What it will not do is give you the proficiency level. So if you travel out of state and you go to a school that doesn't have the equivalent CIS course, then you can take your SEAL that says, "I am advanced low." And because the American Council for Teaching of Foreign Languages is nationally recognized, that means I'm going to most, certainly universities and colleges in terms of what level of proficiency a student would have.
Thanks.
And it's kind of interesting that you raise that question, because it's kind of like advanced placement, right? So advanced placement is nationally recognized, but each college and university gets to decide if they're going to recognize a four, say, on an APUSH test, right? So Northwestern University in Chicago will not recognize for college credit anything under a five. So it, you know, it's really, you know, it's really good for us to help our families understand that when they're looking at colleges and universities and to provide as much help as we can for them to get that information ahead of time, so that there's no surprise, you know, when they are making those decisions. Speaking of assessment, it's a great time to have this conversation. So we brought, we were fortunate enough to be able to bring all three, representatives from all three schools and levels together twice this year for a conversation around an aligned K-12 program. And one of the things that came out in our conversation was the need for an aligned assessment system, especially across, you know, when you go from fifth to sixth, when you go from eighth to ninth. And, you know, teachers are wondering, where are they at? And right now, I'm speaking of Spanish language proficiency. Okay? So having this conversation will, again, help us to build a strong program. It will help us identify needs and challenges for our kids, and it's a very timely conversation. We assess Spanish reading proficiency in elementary at RDLS with the EDL II, which is the Spanish version of Teachers College. But that doesn't assess Spanish language proficiency. It only is assessing one domain. Okay? So, yeah, go ahead.
So when you think of, for our multilingual learners, we're always looking at speaking, reading, writing, and listening. The same is true of our emergent students. We want to make sure that they are fully well-rounded, not just strong readers of Spanish, but also writers of Spanish, speakers of Spanish, and also when they are getting that input from other Spanish speakers, that they are able to understand and then also project out.
So it's, you know, it's, we're not unlike other districts who have dual-language immersion programs, but we are in a very timely, we have, it's a good opportunity for us right now to have this conversation. Since we are in the midst of budgeting right now, what you're going to be seeing next is simply a proposal. No final decisions have been made yet. But in talking with staff at all of the buildings, the next several slides are going to talk about a proposed assessment system. So at RDLS, we are proposing that at the minimum K-2, but it can go down to early childhood and pre-K as well, is to assess our students using the CPAA, which is the Children's Progress Academic Assessment. And that is done in Spanish in both reading and math. So as I go through this, I want to make sure that we understand that there's always the, we've got the constraints from the state on number of hours assessed for our students. So that always has to be in the back of our mind when we're trying to build anything, because we would be out of compliance if we go over those hours. In grades three through five, we would do the measures of academic progress for math in Spanish, because they're taught math in Spanish. Starting in grade three, we would assess with the measures of academic progress in reading in English, but starting in winter. That gives time for students to begin their instruction in English at the beginning of the year. And then our MCA threes are in reading and math. Grades four and five are map and reading in English, our MCA III in reading and math. And then in grade four would be the very first placement for that full cadre of Spanish language proficiency assessment. In grade five, we have the MCA III in science in the spring, along with reading and math, but grade five is unique for the science test. We also utilize EDL II, which is in Teachers College. That's an initial assessment completed before conferences. And then the other thing that we talked about was Palabras a Su Paso, which is Spanish Words Their Way, which is a word study program. We purchased Words Their Way in English for the elementary buildings this year to begin building a really solid word study program for our students. And the Palabras a Su Paso is the Spanish version of that.
Can I ask you about the assessments?
Yeah.
So you're doing the map test in English in third grade later in the winter because So you're doing the map test in English in third grade later in the winter because you will be teaching literacy in the beginning of the year, I assume? But because it's a growth test, how is that, how are you going to make conclusions based on the ones that, right? From one year to the other because it's going to be new. So I get that, and I think it's important to see that the map one in math is going to be in Spanish. Because definitely the vocabulary and the learning, that's the best way of measuring. How do you see that? Because there's definitely, there are differences in how you do literacy, the writing and the reading, of course. So what were some things that you're thinking about those? For the measuring of the Spanish literacy?
Right. For the measuring of Spanish literacy, we would continue to use all the way through the EDL2, which can start at the primary level. So it's an initial reading assessment given to the students.
EDL2 will be all grades?
Yes. EDL2 in Teachers, yes. EDL2 in Teachers College, so it's the Spanish-English version of the same assessment, would be given all the way through. It just, it would be EDL2 all the way through and then Teachers College once they are being instructed in English. Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you. At secondary, we talked about that same Spanish language proficiency assessment, the same one that we would administer in fourth grade at grade seven and grade 10. And then the assessment for the SEAL of By Literacy would be taken at the end of junior year. So the conversation that staff had around a Spanish language proficiency assessment, and we spent a considerable amount of time looking at different ones. We spent a long time looking at different ones. And we've landed on the possibility of two. First one is called STAMP, which stands for Standards-Based Measure of Proficiency. And the other one is APPLE, the ACTFOL Assessment of Performance Toward Proficiency in Languages. And we have a lot of acronyms all the time, it seems. Both of them utilize the ACTFOL language standards. We, we are, we're not really sure quite the difference between the two of them right now. We were online, we were looking at them, you know, they're very similar. We're not 100% sure how they would or would not differ for our students. And so we are proposing that we purchase a set number of both of them this year and give half to one group and half to another group and kind of see where it falls.
Then we were asking for kind of a smattering of both our L1 English speakers as well as our L1 Spanish speakers, and then kind of a low, medium, and high range to really give you a feel of how will these assessments work for each of our kind of groupings and the multi, the multiple or complex groupings within our immersion courses. Cost-wise, they're both fairly pretty comparable. Some of the assessments, there's a fairly large list from MDE of approved assessments that one can use, but some are extremely expensive. So that is another consideration is what works for DLI and that number. But then again, when you add in your world language speakers and your multilingual learners, then that number increases.
And some of them time-wise are prohibitive. I mean, so a couple of them take a very, very long time and they're individually administered. So it would be a really, really long time getting through all of them. For the SEAL of By Literacy, no assessment has been landed on yet, but teachers were leaning toward the possibility of taking the AP Spanish Language Assessment for the SEAL of By Literacy.
Can I ask the secondary assessments, is that literally the same assessment, fourth grade, seventh grade, 10th grade?
Different levels, but the same assessment. So you would be able to see, you're not comparing apples to oranges.
The STAMP, for example, goes seven to adult, but they also have a STAMP E for STAMP Elementary.
Yep.
And those are used to see how the students are progressing and growing. However, for the SEAL of By Literacy, the only one that matters is the one at the end of junior year, right? So.
Yep.
Well, we do, we definitely want to see, so like what the STAMP and APPLE both would be to give us a proficiency level. So where would we expect students to be, for example, in tenth grade? If they were at, you know, intermediate low, we might want them to actually be quite a bit higher considering they would be aiming to take that SEAL assessment at the end of their junior year.
So one of the great things that came out of this year was the fact that one of our high school administrators has been named kind of a point person for the dual-language immersion program at the high school. And we also have a dedicated counselor who will be working with our multilanguage learners and our DLI students as well. So here is the cadre of people who are working together to create this program. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
So I noticed the comment at the bottom of one of the slides that says that the SEAL can be earned by others not in dual-language immersion as well. Can you just share a little bit, is there a process? How do students learn about it?
Yeah, so that's like the world language students. So if you're taking French or German or in Spanish, not the immersion Spanish, but the Spanish courses, it's the same process. And they'd be taking the same kind of assessment. Similar to our multilingual learners or English learners, they also have the ability to also take a STAMP or an APPLE, but in their language. Now granted, you do have a number of students that speak less commonly spoken languages in the state or in the nation. And so the Department of Ed Ed has been working very hard with some of the larger districts where they have more human resources and capital to design along with actual folks a language assessment for Samaul, for example, or Karren. Now, we don't have really Karren students here, but in the future, hopefully we will have some students. But we have a number of Samaul students and, you know, the hope is that they would have an assessment that they could take in and also earn a SEAL.
Thank you very much. It was a very informative question.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move next to Pam Hupped and Craig Bolge for a Nutrition Services Program update. And they're going to provide an overall update on our nutrition services work and then also outline the first steps in creating a policy that is required to have in place by July 1st. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Pam and Craig. Looks like Craig is setting up for some music.
Hopefully it works this week.
All right.
There we go.
All right, well, thank you so much for having us. It's always exciting to be here, and I'm going to try to make it as quick as possible and skip any information you really don't need to know. But just to start out, as a reminder, again, our mission has not changed. We want to provide a variety of food choices to support all of the students in achieving their top performance at every grade level. And, you know, the number one way I think my team can do that is by providing an excellent experience in the lunchroom every day with an interaction with every single student by getting to know their name and asking them how they are and just having very personal, touchable moments with them that makes them feel special. We're going to, you know, again, implement new products and recipes at all grade levels. We've been busy working on that. Soliciting student feedback, both formally and informally. I'm going to talk about that from every level. And then partnering with the administration team to develop future goals to align with our RPS strategic plan about how every student definitely belongs here. And we want, we're, you know, certainly our mission is to make their experience positive every single day. And then we want to increase our program participation in all of our food programs and then look at our comprehensive facility study and what we can do to enhance our environments. So just, you know, I'm not going to spend as much time recapping last year, but those were the total number of universal breakfasts served. And then I just broke apart kindergarten. We're fortunate to be here in Minnesota where the governor's budget does cover kindergarten breakfast for students at every eligibility. So there was almost 32,000 kindergarten breakfasts served last year as well in our schools. And then the number of lunches was almost 860,000. It was a very exciting year. And the fresh fruit and vegetable snack, 410,009. And our average daily participation, so the number of students collectively with all six of our schools that are participating in breakfast is 46.8%. And it was an increase last year of 7.6%. So we put a lot of efforts into making universal breakfasts more accessible for students. And in lunch, we have an average daily participation across all schools of 70.7%, which was an increase of 8.3% last year. Friend reduced percentage ended the year at 63.2. And then just this year, year-to-date, our average daily participation is actually pretty flat overall. It's actually increased at the elementary level. Again, we've done some more outreach efforts with a few additional breakfast kiosks at the elementary school level. And we also do breakfast in the classroom at Centennial Elementary. So our elementary breakfast participation has actually climbed up. But at the secondary level, we're having a few balancing things going on with breakfast. And, you know, it's all good because we're all partners trying to help the students be more successful. So we've been doing some implementation on, you know, really getting to students at every level into class on time so we can start the school day out. So next year, we're looking into possibly implementing a second chance breakfast in between first and second period, for sure here at the high school level. And we can talk about that strategy as well at the middle school level. So year-to-date, the fresh fruit and vegetable snacks, again, were 251,000 plus of those. So again, let's just recap how many on any given day our average daily participation, again, in breakfast is just over 2,000, lunch just over 3,000 district-wide. After-school snack is right around 550. We do have some spikes in that with our targeted services programming that happens at the elementary at different days throughout the week. And the fresh fruit and vegetable snack, just under, you know, just 2,245 on a daily basis go out to all the elementary classrooms, K through five, with that great program. And then summer, we typically serve around 1,100 meals per day in the summer.
Excuse me, Pam?
Yeah.
So if we're serving about 3,000 lunches a day, how do we get to 860,000? Does that include summers or do some kids get multiple lunches?
Uh, well.
What is our count basis?
The, well, how do we, we, I mean, we have a POS system. It's for the entire year you were looking at versus every single...
If we do 3,000 a day, it's like 270. Never mind. I'll figure it out later.
Does the 800,000 include breakfast also? So breakfast and lunch?
Lunches served?
No, okay.
No, it's just lunches for the year last year.
That's okay. I'll sort it out later.
Sounds good. Again, just some of the different strategies. Breakfast in the classroom at Centennial, we talked about that. The mobile breakfast kiosk at the middle school that was, it wasn't necessarily an addition because we had added two breakfast lines last year. We just, one of the breakfast lines on the south end of the middle school cafeteria was getting much less traffic. So we changed that line into a kiosk. But the strategy, you know, has worked so-so. We're reevaluating that for next year. We did add an additional kiosk to STEM that's worked really well. And they've seen, you know, like, last time I looked, 7% increase in their breakfast participation with our additional kiosk. And then at the high school, again, we went to a different strategy here at the high school with two kiosks. And again, it's a different strategy and we're weighing out the pros and cons of that versus what we did the previous year. We're also serving the VPK program that was, again, you know, implemented at the beginning of the school year in our elementary schools, three out of the four elementary schools. And so there's an additional meal service component that comes along with most, not all, but most of those programs in the three schools. So we're providing meals for those. So at lunch, we implemented new serving lines here at the high school. A lot of the focus this year has been at the high school with the new serving lines from our Farm to School grant and all of our new mobile equipment, as well as our digital menu signage, which has really been fantastic. It's so much better. And just marketing of the high school area with just a little facelift. And I have pictures that I'm going to dive into to show you all in case you haven't seen it. And then, yeah, again, part of our facelift, both at the high school and at the middle school, was just, you know, to try to create an environment where kids really felt comfortable, they wanted to be, they were seeing some really positive images of fresh fruits and vegetables, which again, would make them want to eat and consume more of their great food choices. So we talked about the equipment from the Farm to School grant here at the high school. We also purchased a new hot holding card for the middle school, one of the serving lines there. And then recently, I think something weird must have happened over Christmas break because we just had equipment failures just going on. And yes, it wasn't good. Every day was bringing more and more of them. And we were shuffling food all over the place. So it's great, again, to have a great team to be able to rely on to help when crises occur. But Sheraton Hills actually had a three-door refrigerator that wasn't built in, but miraculously fit into the space with like a half an inch on each side that broke down and died after 30-plus long-year life. And so we had to take that out and then order in the proper equipment, get some new electrical, and they're all back up and running, so it's good. And that happened in January. We already, I think, talked about the access to breakfast and the six different kiosks and breakfast in the classroom. The barcoding and wherever Anthony just went. We're scanning of IDs at all of our schools. And just like anything new, you learn once you implement the process, and certainly we've done that. And so, you know, we look forward to making the process even more seamless. Some schools, I have to shout out for Sheraton Hills and RDLS, really to this day have a great process. It works slick. Everybody, you know, again, they're at the elementary level, so it's different when we can get the, you know, teachers involved in the process and the handing out of the IDs and then dropping them at the point of sale in the cafeteria. So it's much different than at the middle school and the high school level where, you know, it'd be great if everybody could wear their IDs and then just pop up and scan their ID and, you know, see the benefits. So we're working on different strategies for next year to really try to build more support at the secondary level because it really would save them time and so that then they could talk to their friends, eat their lunch. And so we're working on different strategies for that. We did utilize our existing keypads where they put in their PIN number to scan their IDs. And again, the best-made idea that was made, you know, for financial reasons, because it was cost-effective and stuff. There is that part of me that's wondering whether or not they should have just gone away and we should have brought in scanning devices because then it wouldn't be tempting to just see that, oh, I could just plug in my keypad number. So, so anyway, living and learning, and that's what we're doing. So here's some pictures from the high school, Richfield High School. Missy, our manager at the high school, behind one of the new serving lines. And then the 70th Street Cafe is also right to the right of Missy in the picture. And we have some window plings that you can see if you're... And we have some window clings that you can see if you're driving your car out on Hurriet Avenue. And then just a picture of Fuel Your Body, Fuel Your Mind, and Fuel Your Life. And we've repeated these messages at the middle school. So, here's the kids scanning their IDs at Sheraton Hills. And they all have their IDs, they're ready to go much quicker. The Great Lakes Apple Crunch Day is, again, we were just trying to create some excitement around eating apples. It's, you know, Minnesota, so we're so fortunate to be able to access so many great apples in the fall. And we have on any given day, like, a minimum of five different varieties of local apples for the students so you don't just have to, you know, like, Carlsen or whatever, Honeycrisp, because you can select and we have them labeled. So, Apple Crunch Day, we just had some fun and had people dressed up our security guard in an apple suit. And at noon, the high school kids, I think, liked it. I don't know, you can speak for your peers, but they seemed to like it. And then also at the elementary level. So, it was a fun event to create some excitement about just making really great, healthy choices. Again, here is the middle school. So, this was done over Christmas break, so this was a good thing, unlike the mechanical failures. So, we brought the branding of Fuel Your Mind, Fuel Your Life, Fuel Your Body to the middle school with some, you can't really see them, so some clings that are on the front there of romaine and field greens and peaches and corn, looks great. And here's their window clings that you can also, they're double-sided, so if you're out on recess in the courtyard or if you're in a classroom across the hallway, you can also see the window cling. So, really nice. You've got to come for lunch. Check it out yourself. These are just some pictures from some district-wide catering events that my team has put together and, you know, FYI. Here's our digital menu signage. And again, this is express lane here at the high school. And then we can scroll messages about anything, about yogurt, about fruits, about vegetables, about sporting events, anything. It's really a great venue. Here's a Farm, I just love this picture, oh my gosh, one of our Farm to School events. And also, we participated in Minnesota Thursdays in the fall, in our fall menu cycle, so September, October, and November, highlighting on the first Thursday of the month, foods that all are grown and made here in Minnesota. So, we stole that idea from Minneapolis Public Schools and Bertrand Webber, and it was exciting. It was fun. I think the kids got into it, so cute. Again, our FFVP program, somebody was talking about acronyms, our fresh USDA Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. We're in the second year of that program. It's a grant-funded program, so every year we will be applying and, you know, hopefully if all the stars align and if Minnesota gets the same level of funding year after year, then our schools should be able to participate. It is based on the qualifier that your elementary school has to be fifty percent or more, free or reduced. And then the funds are allocated from the USDA on a statewide basis to distribute. So, this is just a picture from Centennial of the FFVP program. Again, we're in year two of that. The biggest thing, we did focus groups at the elementary level last year with third through fifth graders at each school. We went out and we asked them a very short series of questions, two different groups. And pretty much all of their feedback, we have implemented, and it's worked out really well. Because I know the question comes up sporadically about the FFVP program and are the kids consuming the snack? The kids love, honestly and truly, they love the snack. I mean, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, it's fruit. And we all know kids love fruit, any kind of fruit. More than happy to try fruit. You have a couple of fruits that I just brought that they've tried this year or they're going to try with the blood oranges and the golden berries that I brought as samples tonight. So, they get really excited. And then on Tuesdays and Thursdays with the vegetables, we've really tried to focus on what they said, on wanting more traditional vegetables is one of the things they said because they're hungry at snack time and they want to consume their food. So, we did make a few adjustments with the vegetables and we also added, on some days, just random days, I tried at stickers. It's amazing how motivating a sticker is. It's really motivating. And so, that's working well. We like that, that strategy. So, you know, we really, we keep production records, obviously, every day, the amount of snacks and vegetables and fruit that go out and the amount that come back. If we get any day where we get, you know, thirty percent or greater back and not eaten, you know, we pretty much make a change in future menus based on that feedback from the kids. Because again, we want them to consume the snack. There's days where we'll get like one or two back, that's it. At STEM, they have over eight hundred fresh fruit and vegetable snacks going out. So, it's, it's good, they're hungry, they're relying on the snack. And that's what they said in the focus group, so they really liked trying all the different things, so.
So, can I ask you a quick question? So, for this program, is it K-12 or is this just in elementary?
No, it's just at the elementary level.
Okay. I was in a kindergarten class when they brought those in once, and it was a very large point of excitement.
Right.
They enjoyed it and everybody...
It's, I know, it's really fun to be able to be out in the classroom and see it when it arrives, and it's, it's great. All right, so we already talked about this. Fifty-six percent of our grant funding is used with three months to go. And the reason that that's relevant is last year, in our first year of the program, we were actually ahead of the amount of expenditures that we had already used going into the spring season. So, this is a great opportunity for us to be able to really look at all of the different things that are coming into harvest that we know kids love, like all the berries and, bring them in to the end of the school year. So, we're excited about being in that position. Again, the program is only possible because of the team approach at each building and all of the teachers, all of the PIRAs, the students oftentimes in pairs come and collect the fresh fruit and vegetable snack, bring it back to the classroom. This program would never be possible without all of that whole bigger community seeing the importance of it. So, again, this is just my staff, busy producing some items for the high school, all the fresh salads, wraps. This is some of the outreach that we do at the back-to-school open houses. This is again at the high school with our laptop computers and just being there to assist families with filling out any applications, answering any questions, getting PIN numbers, and making sure the students feel comfortable if they're new on their first day. All right. So, anyway, I'm going to invite Craig to come on up and join me. So, every school district right now is in the process of working on a procedure for handling negative balance lunch accounts. And I think the USDA, you know, again, was really clear that the communication of the procedure to all stakeholders at the local level, you know, has to be seamless and it has to be in several different ways. It can't be a one-time mailing to the household. It can't be just posted on your website. It can't be one blackboard message. It's just, you know, over and over again, once you get to the point of establishing it. And again, it's a decision that, you know, every district is going to decide for themselves on what the right fit is for the entire district with the topic of negative balance lunch accounts. And the fiscal responsibility, again, is a local-level decision for budgeting of the debt, you know, and how that process is going to work on, you know, an annual basis and moving forward. And then the, just as a side note, the procedures can be different at every grade level. In the three different proposed documents, the way that the cross-functional team split it out was actually elementary and secondary have some slight differences, but it's not broken down, elementary, middle school, and high school at this point in time. And the estimated cost per year is hovering around, our estimated forecast would be forty thousand dollars in unpaid meal debt per year. So, however, like I said, negative balance meal accounts right now could be much higher because right now they carry forward with the student year after year. So, if the student is still enrolled and hasn't graduated, it rolls forward, so. So, anyway, proposal number one would just, and I just tried to, tried, they have the copies of all the attachments, right?
We just have these slides.
Just this slide?
Yep.
Okay. So, what, again, with the actual proposal, we'll have to get the documents out to everybody. But the difference is, so in proposal one, no K through five student, no elementary age student would ever be denied a meal. What would happen, though, that is different from our current practice is that at minus fifteen dollars or more, they would receive an alternate meal choice, which would be a cold meal choice until payment is received or they contact, like, the nutrition services department to, you know, ask for additional help, you know, just inform us of anything that, you know, we might be able to provide additional support for their family. At the secondary level, in this case, grades six through twelve, the same would hold true about getting an alternate meal at minus fifteen. However, at fifty dollars or more in this proposal, then a student would need to bring a lunch from home at that point in time until any payment can be made against the negative balance lunch account or any support can be provided, additional support to the household to work through any additional support that they need. The really difficult thing, this topic itself is super, super complex and difficult, but the one thing that we do, there is quite a bit of research that backs up, is once a student reaches minus twenty-five or more, the odds of a district collecting from the household goes sharply down. And so, again, then you just need to have a plan that supports that, that strategy. So, in proposal one, the, this would actually eventually get to the fact that meals would be withheld after minus fifty or above.
Pam, can I ask, before we get into the others, a few years ago, something like this came up and it was, we were in the practice at the time of if balances got to a certain level of negative, students would get a cheese sandwich or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
So, is that what we're talking about for a cold, cold meal, like a cheese sandwich or?
Actually, we're talking about a complete cold meal choice. So, it wouldn't just be a sandwich, period.
It would be a sam...
A complete meal, a sandwich, a milk, a vegetable, and a fruit, a piece of whole fruit. And it would also be a choice that another student in line could be making on that day.
Because a few years ago, it was, I think, one of the things that was odd about it was when we were giving out that alternate lunch or the cold choice, it wasn't, it wasn't subsidized by, by, by like the USDA. And so, we were actually losing money on the deal while enforcing this, this rule, right? We could have given the student, knowing that they weren't going to pay, a hot lunch, and it would have cost the district less.
Mm-hmm.
So, is that still the case?
Well, the reimbursement rate that we get is based on the student's eligibility. So, there's a couple of different scenarios because some of the students who have negative balances might now be free or might now be reduced. So, we get a higher level of reimbursement for those meals once they're approved with the educational benefits.
Yeah, I guess maybe we were talking, I guess that, that window is the reduced...
Right.
...those in the reduced who run to a negative balances.
And in Minnesota, the governor's budget covers the cost of the household. So, again, we get an uptick in reimbursement for those meals as well. So, it's really, the, the important thing is, is trying to be able to provide a meal to sustain the student throughout the day, but also trying to really work with families about interacting with us so that we can either help support them or figure out a solution.
So, anybody who qualifies for free or reduced receives a free meal?
They do, yes, yes.
So, we don't have that same...
So, we don't have that same issue, okay, of...
Everybody receives free if they are eligible for free status or reduced status based on the USDA guidelines.
And you'd mentioned a moment ago that the balances follow the student, so it's quite possible that a student leaves K-5 and arrives at secondary already at, at minus fifty, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, you know, is it, I don't know, we, we can debate the wording of need to bring a lunch from home because what we really mean is you won't be getting a lunch here. So...
Yep. That's proposal one. And then proposal two, again, the next two proposals really don't address the not getting a meal at school. The, what they do address is just the alternate meal choice and then the balances, the negative balances from, they bring it down to minus twenty-five for secondary students. The, the thing about, yeah, to, they bring the bad, the total balance down for secondary students. And then on proposal, on proposal three, the thing that is added in here, it's still at a minus twenty-five or more for the secondary level. Again, no withholding of meals, but the additional item, a lot of districts, you know, it's been well-publicized, do, do a collection referral to an outside agency to try to help collect the funds. Again, there's a number of outreach efforts that really start taking place anytime, and that's written into the actual document, anytime a student's balance is less than ten dollars. So, anytime your student falls below ten dollars. So, you know, granted, we can do emails and calls, but that doesn't mean anybody picks them up.
Is there a cause associated with the collection referral then?
So, we haven't, we haven't reviewed that yet. What I'd like to do is just finish this presentation, and then one of the goals of the committee was to come back here for some feedback. So, if that's okay, and I think this is the last slide before...
It is.
...the power of a great team.
Yeah. These are the people who feed your kids every day and welcome them into the lunchroom and I, yeah, can be part of them. They do a really great job. So, get out to your schools and have lunch if you have students or, yeah, if you have the opportunity, please do. Those are all the twenty seventeen eighteen improvements.
These are next year's...
Once you hit that birthday, we'll come back.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm going too long. Next year, we were fortunate enough to get another Farm to School grant. And with that grant funding, we're working on the design right now for a build-your-own entree salad at the high school that will feature a number of different protein sources and vegetarian choices. And we will provide the, either lettuce, spinach, or combination. And then the student will decide on a protein source and top it with all the vegetables that they want. So, we're excited about that. We talked about the scanning of IDs, improving our process. We are going to... We are going to bring one additional breakfast case here at the high school. Again, we have two, so that would be three to try to increase the access to breakfast and get them served quicker with the new start times at the high school. Second chance breakfast, we want to give that a run here at the high school. And again, so that we're able to make sure that we're getting all students to class on time. We're looking at a possible meatless Mondays menu strategy to really highlight other protein sources on Monday and just create awareness around that for all students. New competitive foods area for the middle school and the expansion of the alternate meal choices, bringing some wraps and different things there. Just new menu items, all schools, like quick scratch recipes, like Italian mac and cheese, waffles and chicken, a mashed potato bowl, ciabatta and panini, hot and cold sandwiches. We talked about meatless Mondays. And then the middle school will also get the digital menu signage next year. So the TVs will not be black anymore. Oh my God, it's so exciting.
Very good. So obviously, before we get into the tougher conversation about the, what to do with the negative lunch balances, I think one of the things you can tell is Pam and her team really are holding themselves to high expectations, are really embracing change and the opportunities around that. You see a lot of this energy and a lot of this comes with grants. You know, grants require somebody putting some energy into writing those. So this, many of these projects that Pam is talking about are grants that if we're not applying for, we don't receive. And so it's additional money coming into the district, paying for the claims, paying for the serving, the serving areas and the serving wells to really upgrade that equipment. And so kudos to Pam and her team for that work. Go ahead.
I just wanted to share one thing that I saw last week that I thought was so wonderful was that Congressman Keith Ellison tweeted out a picture of himself at Richfield Middle School with, I think it's Amy Coughlin, one of our team members at RMS, talking about how he was able to see the nutritious food that was supporting our learners. So it was really cool to see him tweet that out. He obviously has a huge following. I had to go back a long ways through his tweets to see the date, but it was on March 13th, if anybody wants to retweet it or favorite it, but it was really cool to see that.
Thank you.
So really, a lot of great things happening on in the kitchens and stuff like that, making sure our kids are well-fed, making sure they're nourished, not just at what we used to know as school lunch, but school breakfast, school lunch, school snack, all throughout the day are really embracing that. Getting to that tougher question about what are the options around negative lunch balances? This is something that, as Pam said, all school districts across the nation have been tasked with identifying guidelines that are well-communicated about what the status is, how districts handle those negative lunch account balances. Pam and the team on that option creator committee really worked to identify what are other districts doing, looking at those options and trying to figure out what would be most effective. Common goals around making sure that our kids are fed, that they have opportunities, working with some of the other districts. I think Pam found out that other districts had option, had offered the alternative meal. And the secondary specifically, just kind of worthfully embracing with their team appropriately as far as how they were handling or how they were communicating. So they found that some of the secondary students just kind of like, oh, whatever, you know, I'll just keep charging and we're not, needed more enticement than elementary kids did in that program and also have more opportunity to kind of go and, kind of offer support or guidance to their parents and encourage them to pay and have that opportunity as well. So I think that's where a lot of these came from, as far as those options and really wanting to seek feedback on how to best handle it. When we started moving through this system, I think we moved away from the alternative meals and kind of were in the situation of feeding everybody. What we found is that even though we're working hard to get applications filled out for free and reduced lunches, we now have individuals who just are not paying and are knowing that they don't have to pay and they're not necessarily individuals who, they're either individuals who've been turned down with their applications or have just kind of not even responded and haven't communicated when they get the calls and the communication asking for the pay and the support and get the calls from the social workers or the nutrition services staff, you know, asking for that support and just kind of counter that with just kind of continuing on that pattern of not paying it, which is for us accounting for $40,000, which is real staff and real dollars for things that we could be using in other ways. So I wanted to come here with those options that really are, have been identified by other districts, and option one, two, and three that we'll move forward here for consideration, seeking feedback, and then the opportunity to go back to that committee and kind of revise that or monitor that if necessary, so.
Question?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Crystal.
We probably all will contribute.
So reflecting back to Tim's question, because of course, we, you know, we did sort of have a conversation about this a couple of years ago, is, are, am I understanding correctly that, because we have our current policy of essentially allowing these balances to accrue somewhat indefinitely. So am I understanding correctly that we are sort of learning from that experience that there, there is a certain, that there's a cost to allowing those balances to accrue indefinitely that we hadn't anticipated? Is that, am I getting that right?
I think there are a couple pieces, but go ahead.
So yes, I mean, so for me, immediately I had an initial visceral emotional reaction to alternate meals and those ideas, beginning my career as a superintendent. And we found that what was approximately $15,000 about three years ago is now about $40,000. And so the simple act of not giving alternate meals has changed the amount of people, or over the last several years, the amount of people has steadily grown who are not paying a lunch tab. So trying to find convenient ways, be that, be that alternate meals, be that collection agency, be that doing some things differently to ensure that this isn't impacting our bottom line in the same way. And the goal of the conversation today is this committee worked very hard to come up with some ideas by examining what other districts are doing. And the goal today is to bring those ideas to the board to get some feedback to help guide what would be an appropriate policy. Because if we recall, this is in the superintendent's report, and so this is a conversation we're having to guide whether or not we move things forward or how we move those things forward to try to get that feedback today.
I have a lot of feelings about this, so I will just put that out there very upfront. A lot of questions and, and things that I am interested in knowing more about and am very much trying to keep an open mind on. One question first, for the K5 students for whom the proposed threshold across all three proposals is $15, how many meals does that represent? So how many, how many lunches, for example, would get you to that $15 mark?
Lunch is $2.50, so it would be six meals once you're negative. But we start a full-fledged outreach at anything under 10 with statements in the backpack, emails, automated calls, so that accounts for four more, so 10 different opportunities.
Um, because as I was first reading, at 15 felt like a, a pretty low threshold when thinking about introducing an alternate meal choice. I, I will say, I potentially feel a little bit better in hearing that any student might choose the alternate meal choice. I was really concerned about the signals, if it's a certain group of kids that have this lunch and everybody else is getting this lunch, just from a school culture and student value perspective. I think another thing that, that struck me across all three proposals was why the threshold was so much lower for K5 than for our secondary students. And just trying to understand how the committee came up with such different thresholds for the, the two groups.
Well, the basic reason for the difference in the amount was just based on the meal prices itself.
Okay.
The 2.75 versus 2.50, number one. So that was pretty much where that stemmed from, the difference.
So at the older grades, don't they get the, don't they get the alternate at the same level, but there's a different consequence when they get to the higher level? Right? So they do get the alternate lunch at the same, am I right?
Correct.
The same threshold as the elementary?
At $15?
Yeah.
It's a tiered system. On the science school, they're different, but it's a tiered system where the alternate meal gets in 50, and then either 20 or 50 is when it's the normal serve.
Okay.
The one thing that they have, the, that's written in the actual document is with their access to view their grades, view their lunch statements, inform their parents, so all of those steps are also about increased responsibility, just like their increased responsibility academically as well.
The, the last thing that I'll share and then I'll let others contribute is I, I had a pretty strong visceral reaction to the idea of bringing a collection referral agency when thinking about vulnerable families. And I know, as you said, it, it's not necessarily and perhaps not ever free and reduced price families who would be affected by this, but still the, the thought of our school system potentially having a really significant negative impact on a family's well-being and livelihood is something that I think I would struggle with a fair bit. So just wanted to share that.
So taking off from that, I guess, is there, would there be a way for us to differentiate from someone that, the difference between a family that couldn't pay and a family that's choosing, perhaps choosing not to pay? Is there a way to differentiate that? And we all have to think about, are we willing to put this on the kids? Ourselves? And I know kids need responsive, to have, be responsible, but this, paying for the lunches is the responsibility of the parents. So that, that would be, I, I get the point, and $40,000 is a lot of money, but I, I would struggle with putting this on the kids and having kids go through a full day of middle or high school without lunch.
And I think that's been the debate out there that's public about alternate meals or collection agency.
Right.
Because one really is on the parents and one ends up impacting the kids, which I think many people say ultimately influences the parents. But to that same point, our social workers in many cases are involved in those hardship cases, you know, and the nutrition services staff in the high school, and they're looking at miscellaneous fees that are being due, they're, they're working on situations where it's available to them. You know, and so that still is a part of the process and to be considered. And so that's something that's working on in the communication that you're getting is a part of it. But then there are people that don't respond and it's hard when you don't have any responsiveness and outreach to gather that information and collect that at the same time, too.
I will say that this district, more so than the previous districts that I've been in, I think it does a better job at all of the partners trying to work together to support families as many possible in different ways that we can. So just, you know, I see that, but you don't see that. But with the social workers and the administration at each grade level and, you know, personal phone calls, I mean, you know, just one-on-one phone calls from folks and, you know, along with, like I said, letters and statements going to the household. And so, you know, we really try to do a diligent job about communicating. And I think the one thing that's frustrating is our problem keeps growing, even though we're doing all of these efforts to really communicate. So we wanted to build something in so that families felt like, communicate back, give us some communication so that we can understand and try to provide you with support or offer, you know, talk to them to see what, you know, if anything, we can do.
Perhaps. I think one of the challenges of writing guidelines is it's kind of the rules, you know, what happens here, what happens here, and that's kind of what we follow. I'm wondering if it might be helpful and if it's a resolution to make sure those guidelines include information about if your, if your family's in hardship or isn't able to pay, here's who you contact, so that's also written out in those guidelines that's expected. So that's something that can be built in that way if that helps support some of these other components to it.
Is there something different about these, these balances than say like the other unmet, unmet obligations that, that students' accounts sometimes pick up, like whether maybe they didn't pay for athletics or, you know, at the high school level, things like that? Is there, I mean, other than that, a lunch balance can grow on a daily basis, whereas athletics may be seasonally? I mean, how do we treat those?
Well, it's my understanding, again, you didn't have to ask David, boy, but we've had a brief discussion about it, but it's my understanding that in most cases, it, students sign up for multiple sports so that they have to pay their pass due before they can re-sign up. Like for a lot of times, student athletes are actively involved in a number of ways. So they're.
Do we track these accounts in isolation or are they on a combined basis? Do we know that the same student who might be, might not have paid yet for football, so like my son did, as it turns out? And he eventually did. The, the student who hasn't paid for that might also, you know, have a, have a lunch balance. And so before that student can sign up for baseball, something has, you know, they all have to be settled.
I think the high school could comment.
So when Emma wants to go prom, she will have to get her unmet's cleared.
Okay.
Meaning she will have to stop at the athletic office, food service, the paying and receiving office, and the media center.
Okay.
And that's where all that gets tracked and checked and have to make. We implemented a policy a couple of years ago where students had to pay $50 towards their unmet before they would get a ticket. Assuming those unmet's by the time you're a senior, graduation time, those unmet's should be paid. At that point now, we would see some students that would come through and see pretty hefty unmet's. In the last couple of years, we put some stopgaps in such as athletics where, well, you need to pay $50 towards the season you're in before you can go on to the next season and things like that. But you can't hold students out, you can't hold their transcript for unmet operations in public schools.
Right.
You could hold them for walking across the stage at the medicine room. That's not all right, that's a privilege.
I think with the high schools and the unmet's and the nutrition services, one of the challenges, you get so deep that you almost feel like you can't get out. And so when you have this provision of here's the guidelines and it just kind of accrues until you get to the high school, where then all of a sudden they're trying to accumulate for, or trying to get reimbursement for all those unmet's that are throughout, that becomes the challenge. And so that's part of the reason about the communication of here's the dollar amount where this happens, here's the dollar amount that this happens, and if you have special circumstances, then we'll work with you, but we need to have that dialogue and communicate around that.
And the high school's been a great partner with us to try to get the communication again out to the students and families. Tomorrow night's conferences, they have sealed envelopes for everybody who has a negative balance at all at the high school level, because certainly we don't give the student statements on the line at the high school. So they're attached right to the student's schedule for if parents come to conferences. So again, they've been great about, you know, always including us on that.
So I'll turn back, are there any other guidelines or suggestions that you'd like the committee to kind of reconsider as part of the process as they refine these different components?
So the one thing I was thinking is if we were to implement any of the three proposals, it is somewhat of a shift.
Right.
And in acknowledgement of both Crystal's thoughts and I think Tim also had some thoughts about that transition from K5 to 6, 8, that we might look at making some, making some accommodations to allow for a, a learning curve, basically, for, for our families to adjust to a new system and to new expectations. I guess that would help me to have a sense of comfort that we're being fair.
And I think how we communicate this out and making sure, you know, what you said about reaching out and, and not, not pushing them to have to come to you, but if we're reaching out and saying, how can we help you resolve this? I think that goes along.
Do you know where that balance is available? Because I'm looking on my school view right now, or whatever it's called, student view, and I can't find it. So I don't know, is it available on parent view or?
It's in FeePay.
FeePay.
Oh, so it's on a separate?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I don't know if any students really know how to access that.
Anthony, can you?
So most students can access FeePay because their parents set up a account.
Yeah, because I don't have.
Parents has access in there, but if the student set up their own FeePay account, they would have access into it, but that's not a default.
Or your parents can give you access so that you can put the money in yourself, because sometimes that's more efficient than waiting for your mom to put the money in your account.
No, I think it's a, a great point.
Just because the students are supposed to be more responsible when they're in 6 through 12, it's kind of difficult if you don't have access.
The other thing is the net cash machines at both the middle school and the high school, if you go to those, you can't scan your ID. But if you put in your PIN number, it gives you your balance.
So Mr. Holgi, when does the committee meet again? Is it after break?
Yes.
Okay, so since we have, you know, the rest of this week and then break, and then actually a board meeting shortly thereafter, I'm going to ask board members to reflect on how they stand on the situation. Obviously, there's a few things in regard to alternate meals or how we serve students. There was, in the proposals, there was no meal at a certain point for upper level students, and then there was also a conversation in there about collection agency options. I heard board members talk about communication and making sure we were being clear in that. So I will, I will be responsible over the next period of time to make sure that our board members are, are able to review this again, that they're going to be asked to reflect on this before we have a further conversation coming up. Probably we'll bring this back to the board, so I'm going to ask the board to be ready to reflect on this in a few weeks after break, because each of those three, three things are having some responses and that's exactly what the goal of this first introduction. The reminder being the policy has to be played out by July first as an expectation from USDA. What's in that policy is completely up to us in the end, and that's the conversation for us to have.
And you'll send us the additional document that you-
Yeah, we'll send you the draft documents.
Thank you for the wonderful snacks.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, Dr. Roby will be joining us for a brief presentation of the Achievement and Integration-
Keeping it Light.
Plan, yes, Keeping it Light, we're going to be talking about Achievement and Integration, the plan that goes to the state of Minnesota, and part of that is making a brief presentation to the board.
I like how you keep saying brief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Very subtle.
What I will be sharing with you is the presentation of the Achievement and Integration Plan, or sometimes called AI. It is a three-year plan. Our current plan, which goes from 2014 and will sunset in June of this year, is wrapping up and we will be getting a new plan for the next three years. The three, go ahead. If you look at, nope. This is the purpose of the Achievement and Integration Plan. It's specifically looking at a logical relationship between goals, interventions, and objectives to make sure that we are meeting all student outcomes and helping students achieve. And so I'll just give a, a second for people to read that. And so the Achievement and Integration Plan is made up of three components, goals, which are always student-centered, and they're not determined by programs, they're not determined by participation, they're determined by what our students need. And then we also have objectives, they're statements of what we think needs to be accomplished, and then our interventions are the active, activities that help us accomplish those objectives. Go ahead. Under our current, our new Achievement and Integration Plan, we have three goals, and they are tied to the World's Best Workforce. There are five components under the World's Best Workforce, so if you look at the three goals, goal one is to reduce the proficiency gap, and that's under the World's Best Workforce, that's align all racial and economic achievement gaps between students and making sure that those are closed. Goal two, all students graduating within four years, and we have a specific goal of making sure that our students continue to accelerate and continue to beat the state, but continue to go towards 100% of our students graduating on time with a goal of 93.5 of our students graduating by 2020. And that's aligned to students are graduating and then also are college and career-ready. And then goal three is the percentage of students who are proficient at grade level will increase by 20% between the next three years of testing. And this kind of goes, it's two goals encompassed in that because the checkpoint or the, the place where we take a pulse is at the third grade MCAs, but it also speaks to our early childhood program and all, all of our learning experiences. So it's not just what they're doing at third grade, there's an assumption that we have to be doing some things at second grade, first grade, kindergarten, and, and our early childhood programming.
Excuse me, leader?
Yes.
Before we get too far, goal two and three have pretty specific numbers in them and goal one just says reduce. So do, did we not want to claim how big of a reduction was, was what our goal was? I mean, we could, we could make the tiniest incremental progress towards that and declare success, or we could pick an amount that we want to reduce?
And actually, in the full document, it does list the incremental growth changes to make sure that we're making some progress.
On, on goal two, was there something specific, like ninety-three and a half percent? The, the magic number? Ninety-five was too high, ninety-two in that, you know?
And so typically what we do is we look at goal, where we are currently, and then look at what is an appropriate measurable goal between now and then. And so using our MCA data, for example, we have a 10% increase. So if we are achieving at a certain percent, we expect to increase by 10% more. And so that's how we got to 93.5% by 2020.
And my last question on this slide is, and it relates to other things, when we say, uh, goal three, increase by 20%, is that in absolute or relative terms? So we want to go from say sixty to eighty or sixty to seventy-two?
Um, that's a good question. We want sixty to eighty? Yeah, sixty to eighty.
Okay.
Since we stopped here, I, I was talking with the superintendent earlier about goal one, and I think especially because we started our night hearing about our American Indian students. Can you just say a word about why Black and Latino students are the only subgroups that are called out here in terms of gap reduction? Because I just think it's important to acknowledge.
Sure. And so with our Native American students, how we are measuring students by each grade level, you have to have a certain percentage for it to be considered valid. And so if we're looking at students where they're performing at, say, fourth grade and we only have, and I'm, I don't remember what the numbers were for fourth grade, but say we only have eight students, that's not enough students to include in that. But we still are making sure that we have strategies and things in place to support that student growth. And so our three largest demographic groups are our white students, our Latino students, and our African-American or our Black students. And so those are the ones that we have kind of articulated that that's what we're working towards, but it is inclusive of all of our students, our Somali students and our, our Native American students as well.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was shared.
Thank you for that clarification, asking that clarification. Okay, so, and I only listed a couple, these are samples. What an objective is, if you think about, and I'm going to make a, an analogy, okay, you're making a cake. So your objective, that's your ingredients, that's what you need to have. And then your interventions are the directions, so how do you mix up everything so that at the end you get your cake? And so these are some examples of interventions that we have included in, in our Achievement and Integration Plan. The full document specifically outlines what things we're doing, but these are just kind of an overview of those things. We're trying to ensure that we do have a framework to support our students both in literacy and mathematics. As you know, we are concerned about all content areas, but those are the areas that have been identified as a state, as how schools are measured, and so we want to make sure that we have systems in place to support our students pre-K through twelve in those content areas. The expansion of the early childhood program that you've heard about and you know that we are continuing to grow in that area, making sure that students have an early, successful childhood experience as they go, go through our system. We know that research says students who are exposed to literacy earlier will be readers and want to be in school. And so we want to make sure that we have a very strong, robust program. Increase exposure to advanced courses at all levels. And the one that I can just easily identify for everybody, and we've talked about this a couple of times this school year, is the induction of our seven-period day at the high school. But if you're talking about backwards planning and what does that look like at the other programs in our middle school, making sure that students have accelerated classes and many of, many opportunities to continue to grow and to develop. And then also with our elementary students, making sure that we have a strong, robust, talented education program and making sure that we provide different opportunities for students to show their gifts and, at all grade levels. And then the multi-tiered system of interventions, what we are looking at for next year is moving towards press, and that's a framework versus a program, and it helps teachers identify very clearly what students need and be very diagnostic and be able to do right-in-the-moment interventions for students, and we're looking at providing that support for our students next year. And that leads me to questions. Are there other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. So even though that was a really, to use Tim's words, really dense document to go through, there's some amazing things to read through in there that are happening in our district for students. I mean, you talked about the press format and where they're looking at, instead of calling a student low in math, they're looking at where they're struggling and finding the specific area. So in a curriculum advisory committee meeting like a month or so ago, Mike Wallace came and he did like a little experimental lesson with all of us, like something that they're doing with the students, and he called it, I still don't remember.
Number Talk.
He called it Number Talk, right. So he gave us fractions, decimals, whole numbers, and separated us into groups, and then told us to, without multiplying it out, to put those numbers in order. And then he went around with the groups and talked to us, and instead of saying, oh, you have that right or that's wrong, he asked questions about how we got to the answers that we had. So he was listening to see how we figured it out. So how do we get, how do we decide which number, which one of these numbers was bigger? And learning how we're thinking rather than figuring out if we have the right or wrong answer. It was a really great demonstration with a bunch of adults.
It is. And it's a paradigm shift of how we're working very closely with our teachers around how they help students think about math. And so it's not just the computational skills of I have the answer correct, it's what is the process to get that answer? And so you get a better idea of students' understanding, and it also helps our teachers make corrections when we see that, where if you have them describe what they're doing or their thought processes around numbers and number cents, then you're able to kind of make those corrections on the process versus the answer's right or the answer's wrong. And that's something that we're doing with our teachers through our learning academies and professional development and onsite small group during PLC time that the directors, Mike Wallace in particular for math, has been working very closely with grade level teams just around that very concept to help deepen the teacher's understanding of conceptual math, and so that helps them as they're working with their students. Other questions?
I had a question from, from within the, the document.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yep, I have it here.
Great. Somewhere in, in the back, we were talking, I'm on page sixteen of the document, we were talking about students of color in AP and CIS courses, target of 12%, 20%, 30% as we go through the three years. And is, is that 12% of all such students in those classes to be students of color? Or is it 12% of all students of color are taking classes of that kind?
That 12% of students of color taking the classes at the same time? What was the other, I'm sorry, say that again.
So we say 12% of students of color in AP, CIS courses, and we say 12%. And I don't know if that means-
I've got this one.
We want 12% of the students of color to be taking the classes, or if you looked at everyone who's in, who's taking these classes, 12% of them are students of color.
12% of them are students of color?
No, no, no. We want 12% of all of our students of color and then growing to 20 and 30.
And then 30, right.
Yes, if we recall, we're actually almost 50% students of color in our AP and CIS classes now, due to the strong efforts of our high school team, of which Mr. Paulson and Ms. Daniels are here. That grew by, I believe, 12% last year. But the goal is to expand the overall population of our students of color in the classes in addition to the percentage of, of students in there.
And, and enrollment in one CIS or AP course would flip the student into the category of being enrolled?
Yes, we want students to try at least one of those classes. And that's also one of the goals of creating the seven-period day with the supports, of which we're going to hear about the enrollment next, and they'll talk a little-
I'm not done.
I didn't say it's your- I didn't tell you to be brief.
Oh, all right. You probably should.
Feudal.
I guess the, my, my only other question is, so this is, this is a, a, a plan that, that enacts July one of 2017. That means another plan sunsets on June 30th.
Yes.
Will we get updates in, you know, you didn't write it. Right, so will we, will we get an update on, on where we stand relative to that plan?
We sure can. Yes, I can make that happen.
At the conclusion of it? Or, okay, I'm just-
Yes, I can make that happen. And so here's what happens with the Achievement and Integration Plan. It is a three-year plan, but each year you do a continuous improvement, and so there are updates, and I can make sure that I provide that to the board so that you can see what we've done over this last school year and also the other subsequent years each year, so that you can see kind of what our progress has been. But I can also do an overall snapshot of what it has looked like from 2014 through 2017.
And Dr. Roby's being a little humble. So she walked into a plan that was here when I arrived as superintendent and she arrived as assistant superintendent, and she sort of led an entire overhaul to align to our district vision and to the way we were going. So much of the plan that has been written has been rewritten by Dr. Roby, and so, absolutely.
That's what I imagine. All right, thank you.
I did realize, a, a question came up actually as you were doing the quick overview of the purpose, and I, I just can't remember if I've seen anything about whether there are any pending bills in the legislature that could affect this program moving forward. Are we aware of anything that could affect Achievement and Integration in the future?
At present, no, but it has been, my understanding, a yearly conversation about transitioning how that money is doled out to districts. There are other areas, and I'll actually touch on them briefly in communications to try to blend legislative update, but there are other areas in regard to funding that are of concern.
Yes.
Quick question, and this is, yeah, this might be somewhat tangential. So I see a lot in the budget in the plan about achievement, which is outstanding. I see a little bit about integration. So what I'm seeing about integration is some commentary about some of the integration that's happening at our SEP with neighboring communities that we've identified as racially isolated communities. I'm seeing a little bit about integration that's happening within our district, specifically at the high school where we're upping the representation of students of color in our upper-level courses. Tell me about, is there any other, when I'm thinking about integration, I'm thinking about what's hap, what's happening within the district, but also what's happening between our district and our neighboring communities. Is there anything on that front as far as conversation with our neighboring communities?
So at all grade levels or at a particular?
Anything.
Sure, and, and so, yes, there are things that we are doing. We have partnerships with Bloomington High School, Bloomington Jefferson and Bloomington Kennedy, where we have gotten together with those students and the police department around relations, and so that's one activity that's been in play. Our students participate in, in previous Achievement and Integration Plans, 2014 through 2017, Dare to Be Real, other kind of things around leadership development, and that includes students from the west metro area as well as Minneapolis and St. Paul Public Schools. In the summer programming, we often have students who come from neighboring districts, including Minneapolis. Bloomington are usually the, the closest partners that will participate in our summer programming. And then also with the early childhood program, our partnership, longstanding partnership with Bloomington Public Schools and Ridgefield. And, and I know that that is changing over this next year, but that's been another area where we've done some partnership work. We are exploring new opportunities. We have students who participate, and I'm thinking about the high school where their students are on a trip to Chicago. I don't know, are they back? Okay. They, they went to Chicago to do some, to meet with scientists and, and do some activities around a project that they've been working on all year, and we've talked about how do we expand that so that we can invite other districts and partner with other districts in the community or nearby to have that same experience and, and also build camaraderie with those students.
And then additionally, Dr. Roby and I were at the Reimagine Minnesota with several of our teachers, where we had students participate in bringing voice to equity with members of 40 other districts, and so they, they were in a large event with almost 300 students, and then superintendents and staff from around 40 different districts at present are talking about a large Achievement, Integration, and Equity Plan, not just for Ridgefield Public Schools, but something to-
Across the state.
-educate policy and educate action for equity and integration across the entire state of Minnesota, and we're excited to be part of that team.
Other questions? Thank you.
All right, so then, with our seven-period day updates, our patient leaders of our high school- high school, Ms. Daniels and Mr. Paulson will be here to present and share some information. I don't believe, Mr. Paternas, that there is a slideshow to go with this one. And so it's just a verbal presentation and update on registration.
Good evening, everyone. So I would like to bring your attention to this sheet here with the orange boxes. And I'm Latonya Daniels, principal of the high school. Eric Paulson is the assistant principal. We just would like to bring you an update as to where we are with the high school transformation or the seven period day graduation requirements change that has happened at Ridgefield High School. So our target, our goal is to improve Ridgefield High School's overall academic proficiency rates, graduation rates, expand our college credit and rigorous course enrollment, as well as narrow the achievement gap. So the whole purpose of this transformation and moving to a seven period day structure and also revising our graduation requirements is to ultimately improve achievement and improve achievement for all students. I have listed here for you a timeline in which we have gone through our registration timeline, and Mr. Paulson was the assistant principal, or is assistant principal, that has been leading this work around our registration timeline. There are some, there are a few things I want to bring to your attention that we did new this year because of the transformation. First of all, we had registration parent nights, parent registration nights instead this year for all of our parents. So for all of our incoming ninth graders as well as our current ninth through 11th graders, we provided two evenings or several evenings in which we provided information about the high school transformation, about the goal of the transformation, the potential courses that we wanted to offer, to just expose our parents to the course offering so they could help guide their children or child in the registration process. That night started out as a whole group presentation and we then broke out into small groups according to the family's interest. So advanced courses met one place, ELL students or families met in another room, also our dual language emergent parents, they met together as a group, as well as our special ed students. And that, the feedback that we received from those evenings was very, very positive and was widely accepted by our parents. Another thing that we've done differently this year is we've hired a master scheduling consultant to help us build a master, master schedule, because we realized that the success of the transformation depends on our master schedule. There are a few things we want to do. We are, of course, expanding our course offerings, but we're also embedding time during the school day for teachers to collaborate and work together. And so, and we're embedding this .5 or additional support course that our teachers will be teaching. So the master schedule, that structure is very important for this transformation to be successful. So we have acquired a master scheduling consultant who has been on site three times to meet with the leaders of our departments, to attend our instructional leadership team meeting and, and as well to meet with our elective teachers and other teachers in the buildings that just want to talk to her about the nuances within their departments as we plan this work. Ann and Eric have worked diligently to scrub our numbers, our tally numbers for our classes that we plan to offer next year. And we are in the process of finalizing those. We plan to finalize the course offerings by the conclusion of the first week back from spring break. And once that is done, we will also finalize the teaching assignments for next school year. We also have a field trip planned to Irondale High School to see their seminar course structure. Since we're going to a seminar model for the support classes here that we're offering to our students, we want to see what that looks like in action. So our teachers, a few teachers, along with some district office, district office leadership will be accompanying us to Irondale High School on April 13th to see their seminar course structure, which embeds college knowledge skills such as ACT prep skills, AAT type skills in their classes, as well as support those students in the specific courses that they're taking, so math or reading. And our goal, which is very different from in the past, is to have a completed master schedule by the conclusion of this school year. So before our teachers leave this year, they will know their teaching assignment and they will also know the master schedule for the next school year. There are some targets that we have as a part of this restructuring piece, and we have extrapolated some information from our current tally results, and I just want to share that with you all briefly. First, currently, we, we want to increase the enrollment of in-school support courses. Currently, we have 58 students in our support courses. Our goal for next year was to have 200 students. However, according to our current registrations, we have 693 students in our in-school support courses. We would also like to increase enrollment of in-school advanced courses, honors, college in the schools, as well as advanced placement. Currently, we have 940 seats taken. The goal was to have 1,000 seats taken by next year. According to our registration data, we have 1,728 seats taken. The third piece is to increase equity of access to enrichment courses, and that is to move from a six-period day to a seven-period day. And some students will also have an opportunity to have more than seven classes depending on the courses that they chose. So that is in progress as well. If you turn to the next page, I have a snapshot of some of the advanced and seminar courses that we're offering at the ninth grade level and the 10th and 11th and 12th grade level. At the ninth grade level, we have successfully completed 281 student registrations. We are introducing a new rigorous course at the ninth grade level, which is AP Human Geography, that will replace civics and geography that we currently offer. And again, next year, we're offering AP Human Geography or the Human Geography option. And you will see 106 freshmen register for AP Human Geography. And almost a third of those students have registered for the support course, the seminar course. 10th grade, we have 305 student registrations, and we have a total of 415 students who have registered for an advanced course and 223 students who will be in a support course, the support seminar course. 11th grade, 301 student registrations, and we have 438 students who will be in an advanced course and 217 students who will be taking a support course. Lastly, for 12th grade, we have 269 student registrations, and we have 489 students taking advanced courses and 98 of our students, seniors, taking a seminar course, a support course. So you will see a trend, a pattern, that as students stick around, they are increasing the rigor within their own schedules by choice. I also want to add that we are adding an instrumental music studio class. So our band teacher will be full-time next year, so that's an increase for us. Our business teacher will be full-time business, and so we will be offering personal finance. We are trying to bring back tech ed by offering .6 tech ed, so we hope to hire someone there. And also, we are adding another full-time fax teacher to accommodate all the requests around our fax program. So that is my update. Are there any questions?
Can we cheer for a moment about the numbers that you gave us?
True.
I mean, I think those numbers are really spectacular. And I mean, and it reaffirms the principle of essentially build it and they will come. So this is the principle in terms, Latonya, I think you've laid it out, it's been laid out by Mr. Nowsky, Dr. Roby, supported by the board, that if we offer our students, if we set the bar high and offer rigorous coursework, our students will rise to that challenge and it sounds like they're more than meeting our expectations. So that's really fabulous to hear.
Thank you. And I want to say that the teachers were so concerned about the support courses feeling, and the support courses, as you see, they, they were overwhelmingly filled. Parents are excited about them, students are excited about them. You have top performing seniors saying, if there were support courses offered in my junior or sophomore year, I would have taken them. So they have gone over overwhelmingly well.
So I like to ask the questions that I just like to hear people say the answers sometimes. But as I'm, as I'm looking at that, so right now there are 940 seats taken in college bearing classes.
Yes.
And if I'm reading this correctly, there will be 1,728. That's somewhere in the 788?
Or so, Tim?
I was reading Goldenberry.
Almost a little off my game.
There are 788 more students or more college credit class.
Passes from our seats taken by our students.
Yes, yes.
And over 600 more students or more, yeah, will be taking classes to support their ability to do this.
Yes, and that does not include the students that will actually receive support to actually meet grade level or to perform at grade level, and also for our early college students. So those numbers does not, they do not include those students that will also receive that support. So these numbers will increase, but this is where we are right now.
So would wow be the appropriate expressive term to describe that, Ms. Daniels?
You can say it, you should say it.
We've just been working, we've just been grinding, we've just been working. Me?
Do you attribute a lot of this increase, or even just some of it, to the parent registration efforts that took place?
Parents definitely appreciated being involved and having the knowledge. What do you attribute to the increase, Eric?
Well, it was interesting because having done this for so many years, I grabbed a couple of different grade levels for, we keep all, all the kids' paper copies. We keep that as a record for, and I said, okay, I want to really see how many, how many, how many of these kids really had a parent signature and did that really impact what we did? Or, you know, am I going to look through and find, okay, out of 10, three have a parent signature and seven don't? I probably saw it close to the other way. Six or seven were coming in with parent signatures. And now definitely, it's a huge increase compared to previous years because, and I was very surprised at that. I was, I wasn't expecting that. I was expecting to see, okay, 30%, and it was more like 60%. Had that, so absolutely that made a big difference.
And I also believe, you all said it earlier, Director Tensing, I think, that if you set the bar high, students will reach for the bar. So we set the ceiling and the floor for everyone in our organization. And so we were very explicit about a push for Latino students, because you know what? They make up 40% of the school population, but they are underrepresented in our advanced courses. And so we were very explicit about putting that message out there. And so we haven't broken down the information demographically, and so we will, but we are just pleased with the increase that we see in our enrollment in advanced classes.
I would expect the opportunity to have a support class, so if you're kind of on the edge thinking, wow, I'd really like to do this, but I'm not confident and I don't want to mess up my GPA, having the opportunity for a support course might just put those kids up to the point where they're comfortable taking it.
So to me, this is something to be excited about from the board level. Just to reflect it back on you all, I mean, you set a vision for high expectations for all of our students. I think it takes courage to look at changing a start time, adding 20 minutes to a school day, moving from six periods to seven periods, and creating a large transformation. You're already seeing some very significant initial numbers that show the vision of this team enacted in human form in classrooms, and then our kids benefiting. And so from the board, to the administration, to the teachers, to the parents, to the students, that's the work that's moving forward in the district, and that's the work that you all as a group should also be very proud of.
I do want to say, they don't fit in these boxes like the honors and AP and CIS type courses, but I am very interested to see some of the titles of the new electives that, that were taken up and will run, because I know that staff put time in to develop them. And, and I'd like, I'd like to think that as going forward, that people see the success of those courses, that they have a hand in designing and running and, you know, like I, I thought they were, they're great opportunities for broadening experiences that don't fit into the CIS, you know, AP.
Any advanced or similar.
Honors, but that doesn't mean they're, you know, they'd be very meaningful courses, and I could think of a million of them that would be fun to run and fun to take.
And that students help brainstorm too, right? Which I think is really great.
And I would say that the increase in the music program, cutting, cutting music, part of the music program last year was a difficult thing to do. But now that the students have made that choice and we can build that back up, I think that's great. It's student-driven, their choice.
Can you think of, not to put you both on the spot, Mr. Paulson or Ms. Daniels, can you think of any one or two classes that you can think of that are running for next year that were exciting new opportunities?
History through film was a very, very popular class. A lot of the English classes, mythology, again, number of students took that. The, the science class, the environmental outdoor science, again, very, was a very popular class. I'm just trying to go off the, off the top of my head with some of those, some of the other ones. So it was a good, a good mixture of classes and teachers were very excited to look at that and go, okay, well, you know, one of the things they're going to run into is, you know, a person that teaches a seminar class is also the person who really wants to teach the AB class in that section, so we'll figure all, we'll have to figure all that out. And we're, we're doing that now, so, yeah. But that's just a little example of those.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you all. Thank you all for your support.
All right, so now we're going to move on to communications, and I will try to communicate quickly, just to hold myself to the same brief level of expectation for Dr. Roby. All right, so as we recall, communications, we brought in a team to look at our communications as one of my professional goals, also one of our strategic plan goals, and something we want to move on towards as a district. I conducted a survey, there were stakeholder meetings held, we actually completed our analysis, and then we had those findings presented to administration and to the school board. And so what the school board had asked was to come back and give a broad brush stroke of what our communications-based plan will be. And so I'm going to give some updates in regard to the recommendations and the actions we plan to take with a larger picture view, with further details, timelines and more specifics as we continue to move forward. One of the things, as we know, we are obviously in a budgetary situation where we're making some reductions, so it's not realistically a time to expand our leadership team. And so going to utilize our current staffing or reduce staffing from administration, because we've talked about reducing staffing, about $300,000 worth as part of our overall reductions, but transitioning our current slash reduced leadership team to have communications is one of those responsibilities. And so while the audit suggested we hire a communications person, and while I would love to go down that road, fiscally, I'm not sure I could strongly recommend that to the team, because we're currently in a situation where we are contracting rather than expanding. And so adding new responsibilities or a new staff person doesn't really make a great deal of sense to me at this time. But finding our current director team, which thankfully, actually, we have Chief Human Resource and Administrative Officer, Mr. Holgie, who has done communications. And we actually have two other directors who have held significant marketing and communications roles in their past. And so we'll be looking at utilizing the strength and skills of our current team members and making some very clear assignments of responsibilities, much like we did last year when we reduced by two district office leadership positions last year. As we look to our reductions and transitions this year, we're going to take some of those same steps, but be very clear in delineating some communications responsibilities and expectations for our team. To note, we have already been beginning updating our website, so it is much improved already. We actually go fully live with everything on July 1st, I believe, as we transform to a new platform. That platform is also fully ADA compliant, which is something that we have been looking at improving and working on as the, the team worked in that direction. All of our websites will look much the same, will be much more user-friendly, and actually we'll have all updated materials on, on all of our webpages. And so we're really looking from a tech perspective at really having a new up-to-date website.
And I will say, the curriculum advisory committee saw a sneak peek last week, the week before, and there was spontaneous applause. It looked really good.
I'm excited.
So I was trying to determine if that was the fruit, or if that was your excitement at the new website.
I'm out of Golden Berries.
The search options were impressive.
Yeah, it is a very nice, much more user-friendly website. It will be very, very well received. Similarly, looking to align our surveys, to create one larger survey from the district and also utilize that to oversee and get feedback on our communications. We have, we'll say, survey overloaded, and I've done three, four, five surveys previously. And so we're going to try to align all of our surveys into one. We do have a superintendent Twitter and we also have Facebook for multiple of our schools, but to have one oversight to both Twitter and Facebook for our entire district to support aligning messages and having one clean social media platform is something that we're going to be looking at and implementing for next year. Written communications, we've actually already begun an overhaul. You've actually seen our pre-K and our kindergarten brochures, which are honestly much more effective and, and more attractive than they have been in the past, and we're going to continue more attractive than they have been in the past, and we're going to continue adding oversight and effective communications through our paper and written marketing. Similarly, we're going to continue expanding our staff communications. I, as a superintendent, write a monthly staff letter. We're also going to be looking at continuing, this year, we actually added, Mrs. Picard has been sending out board summaries to our, to all of our staff after every board meeting, and we're going to continue look at best practices to align our staff communication to improve and expand, one unified staff communications. In terms of our written communications, we also have analyzed the need along with our consultant to improve the Your Schools publication, so this goes out three times a year to our entire population. We are currently actually only mailing it in English, and so that was pointed out by Board Member Cole, that having it available in Spanish is probably not the best practice, and while it aligns to our policy, it's probably not the best way of doing things, and so looking at a way to have Your Schools contain less text, make it more user-friendly, make it more interesting, and also put it out in a bilingual format would actually be much more effective as we look at the effectiveness of implementing the Your Schools magazine. Personal communications, so one of the things that we do is we have PTSOs, but they're actually not very diverse, and it doesn't fully reach out to all of our, all of our groups, so we're looking at our communications team or the director responsible would be helping to create communication partnerships to engage diverse families. Similarly, what's happened with our Latino Family Association has done very well with our Latino Family Association, but we're looking at expanding well beyond there and having our, having our district team lead some more unified structured communications-based efforts. Along with those same lines, regular feedback sessions was recommended by our consultant, and so also as an administrative team, we'll be looking at having more regular feedback sessions with teachers, parents, and students. This year, I actually, and have continued to monthly or every other month, meet with Education Richfield, to meet with teachers and hear what's going on and concerns, and then also we are looking at, like I said, implementing that as a larger administration for parents and students beginning next year. Along with that same line, there was a recommendation that our principals do the same thing with regard to not only their staff, but also scheduling our administrators to expanded communications opportunities. So as we think about our community and neighboring partners, creating a rotating schedule of administrators to make sure we have presence at things like our city council and other areas where administrative presence can actually be highly supportive. Along with this, and this is one I've gone into description with board members previously, creating a style guide and a brand guide with expectations for school administrator and administrators. So that would look like, what is an expected response time for a staff member receiving an email from our school? How often should staff members be updating their gradebook, for example? How often should a principal send a newsletter out? What should that newsletter look like and what should be the format? And so throughout, throughout the summer and next year, we're going to be working on an aligned communications guidebook, it's actually something that is, is contained in many other school districts, basically both the format and sort of timing, and so we're going to be working on laying out those expectations, and that additionally was, was expected or recommended by our consultant. And as we do launch our aligned support, we want to have that aligned from a district perspective. So right now, I think we do have six building Facebook pages, but they're all completely different, and so we want to get those aligned not only with the district page, but also with that style and guidebook, how do we do that? And part of how we're going to also communicate is pushing notifications with Blackboard, doing that at the district level, not just at the building level, and really sending those out as effectively as we can. And then, as I spoke to with the survey, again, we're working to align our one annual surveys, so our board had, had talked significantly about receiving input and surveying staff to try to relay, or surveying staff and community to try to get input, but creating one very comprehensive survey, and so we aren't doing a four, five, six survey spring, so that we just have one very strong, well-written survey that we can send out on a yearly basis, which would then also include gathering feedback, and, oh, that's actually going to be the next slide, I'm jumping ahead, so gathering feedback and sending that to our constituents after we get that survey done. It's also going to be likely, we've had a conversation about a possible capital and a possible operational referendum, and so one of the roles of administration is to share that information out effectively, not to take a stand specifically, but also to be very clear in communication and sharing that, and so one of the responsibilities of communication team members would be to captain and lead the sharing of that communication. And finally, one of the recommendations of the consultant with the large transition, and we heard about the significant changes at the high school, the extended day, the changed start time, is really going back through the history and new communication to make sure that our high school transition is running as smoothly as possible, overseeing where the high school has been, where it's going, and make sure that we're really walking through those from step to step to communicate to students, staff, and also our parents. So my plan is, and that was a lot of information, but the goal was a broad brush of here's the areas that we're really going to be working in, and that we're going to be taking those next steps next year. The goal, or the question then is, are there areas we have missed, would be one of those questions for board members, but then also knowing that we'll be delineating a little bit more information prior to the end of the school year to really give some details about what are the timelines for each of those activities, and what's some more information about what will each of those pieces look like?
Detailed question on the director position, which is not really a position. What do you anticipate that'll look like in terms of FTE?
So the recommendation from the consultant was approximately a half FTE of somebody aligned to communications specifically. One of the issues with regard to the communications overall, there's sort of, as I've explored it with my colleagues like Mr. Holgie, who know communications from a professional level at a greater detail than I do, there's the oversight of the situation, there's the district level information of communications, there's the actual actions of communications, but then there's also a graphic and a publication component to that. And so finding a person who has all of those is actually almost impossible to do, and so we, from my perspective, it's important to me to utilize our current director team and align about a half of an FTE of that, of those team members to that position, while also utilizing some funds for the graphic design that's going to be required in the publication that we'll need to do to make this work effectively.
Got it.
Steve, so two things. I think all of the proposals, I believe, align fairly well with everything that came out of the report. The only thing that I'm wondering about, there was this big issue of communication between teachers and parents using kind of the same system, particularly at the middle school, which I heard when I went to the parent study session, that point came out, so I kind of heard you address that a little bit in, in the way that, but it's not that clear, so I was wondering, one, where we're going with that, and then the other thing is that there were some parents that were looking to participate in ways that were beyond the parent-teacher organization, so more of a leadership, so, and I know that you have included a component about that, so it'll be probably a good choice to have to make that option there, and I, I will be working also with your family engagement, bringing some things that I'm doing outside of here as part of my efforts for parent engagement that is culturally relevant, but definitely just something that to keep in mind as we try to give more choices to participate, because a lot of the times, some parents don't want to maybe be involved in, you know, the very much, very needed fundraising efforts, but they sometimes want to, you know, take another step and maybe support other efforts, legislative or grant, you know, writing anything.
Absolutely, so a couple of areas you, you responded to, one is about the, it's on our aligned communications slide around create a style and brand guide with expectations for school and administrators. As you think about the middle school situation, one of the things our DTAC group is working on actually right now is a conversation around, and I use the example of response time, what is an appropriate response time to a parent email? And one of the conversations they're talking about is how often should we be updating our, our teacher webpage, and how often, what should be the gradebook expectations, and what should be the assignment expectations? And so that team is working on some of those style guides, and so it's important that that is not an administrative or school board dictate, it's important that that becomes a conversation with teachers to see what's realistic of an expectation, so the DTAC team's working on that, and I believe they are planning to come forth with a recommendation before the end of the school year, I believe, spring at some point, for what that would look like for us to consider, sort of moving forward with. And then, absolutely, I think that as I look for, in our slides, it was around administrator opportunities and engaging families, I'd like to sit down with you and talk more about what are some, some ways from a culturally relevant perspective that we can actually introduce to those conversations to make sure that as we build out our communications plans, we are not just doing it from what our view might be, but how do we get a better view of what parents would want to see and what families would want to see all across our, all across our district?
So I guess I'd like to see a little more detail, and also specific, some specific areas are kind of consistency between buildings, from everything from like routine emails or any kind of emails that go out to families, the robo calls, so that there's some consistency in formatting and when we use those, when you call into the attendance line, so you can build all of those things that are kind of similar district-wide, so that as people move from building to building, there's more similarity, but maybe just some more details on that aspect.
Absolutely, and so my plan is that I will come back to the board prior to the end of the school year to give some more specific details, and we'll also obviously have the update from DTAC in regard to that style guide and the expectation list, and trying to, to come with more details around the communication plan, so we'll be able to see as a board from a larger presentation, what do a lot of these things actually look like on the ground, and we can get, get further input and feedback.
Specifically talking about the piece that's coming from DTAC, that's going to be rolled under a larger plan for our digital learning model. Part of the conversation that's being had about what digital learning and personalized learning looks like in Richfield Public Schools, those expectations around students, staff, and parents, in particular, when we talk about that expectation around staff communication, is where they talked about the digital aspects when it comes to gradebook information and responding to communication pieces that come in from families and students.
And then for the surveys, I think, I know that we have made changes and done things in response to information that we've gotten from these surveys, but I think it would be good to be able to bring, as we move forward, if we're going to do one survey, to have kind of a protocol for, all right, this is the information we got, and these are the actions we took, and give that information back to the community, and that positive feedback for the ideas that they've shared with us.
Absolutely, I think that's one of the things the communications expert repeatedly shared with us, was that people really liked being asked, and then they also really liked hearing what happened with the information that we gave them. So as I think of what we do with our survey, figuring out an effective way to report that back, and report that back broadly to all our constituents absolutely makes a whole lot of sense.
Okay, that brings us to commendations.
All right, so we have a couple of them, we have Deb Miller, a commendation to Pam Hupt, who was there presenting, and basically, as a wellness committee member, she just shares out how extremely impressed she's been with Pam, and then also noting that she has two kids who go to Richfield High School, and ever since they made the transformation of their food, how they're marketing, window clings, and all the things we saw tonight, they love the turkey wrap, the Caesar salad, and Deb hasn't made a lunch in months, they're all happy to eat at the school, and they're all eating healthier food, so commendation out to Pam.
Can I just comment on one piece?
Yep.
So Deb is our partner with SHIP, she was at a meeting talking about something that was happening in Richfield, and this parent of Richfield shared this voluntarily with Deb. So it was just an anecdotal story about the great things that were happening in Richfield, so I just, sometimes when, when it's not pursued, it's even more fun and exciting.
Yeah. Yeah, that is nice. Similarly, on the Centennial, or on the Richfield Community page, as we track our Facebook, as Centennial Special Ed Parent, and also multiple parents often frequently share positive news on the Facebook page, says, "I have two kids at STEM and two kids in Special Ed at Centennial, and Centennial has been amazing for Special Ed. Keep in mind, I have seven kids and have done Special Ed at literally every level in Richfield because I have multiple kids on the spectrum and one born with a neural tube defect. I'm also on the Special Ed Advisory Committee. I'm a fan of our Special Ed program in general, but Centennial in particular is amazing, and my autistic fifth grader has never been bullied, never. Teachers include me as part of their team, and we are all working toward the same goal, my boys' education and well-being. Centennial is a small school, and the Special Ed staff is dedicated. You can't make people care about your kids, but the staff at Centennial just does." So what makes me proud is not only is this how a parent feels, but they felt strongly enough to post that to the Richfield Community page, and so we throw a commendation out to our team at Centennial who's working very hard to serve all of our students.
Okay, so we will move on at 9:25 to the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review? Would anyone like to make-
I'd like to move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
You have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Baraki, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. So we have no old business, so we just move right on to new business, and a resolution is continuing positions for 2016, 2017.
Thank you, this is a follow-up to our action that occurred at the first meeting in March, we are requesting an additional reduction of .4 FTE this year, .3 of that being at science and .1 in media. The media reduction is a, is a change in media staffing that is recommended from one of the elementary buildings, and so it's readjusting that, and then the science is based on a change at Richfield College Experience Program to kind of make sure that we're set up with staffing moving forward into next year appropriately as well. So we're asking for that resolution approval this evening of that additional reduction of .1 media and .3 science.
I will move the resolution, noting that, as we always do, that this is part of our annual budgeting process and not a specific commentary on staff quality.
I'll second.
So you have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Baraki. This is a resolution, so we will call the board. Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the resolution passes. We'll move on to revised 2016, 17 budget.
Actually, we have a separate item, so the first is the reduction in positions, if I may just jump in here. Next, as a follow-up to that, we have a notice of resolution proposing to discontinue teaching contracts and to place teachers on unrequested leave of absence, specifically that reduction of the science staffing in the Richfield College Experience Program requires that we propose discontinence of a teaching contract at that level, so we have a notice of that resolution here as well.
Madam Chair, I will move the resolution.
I'll second.
You have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Any discussion? This is a resolution, so we will call the board. Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the resolution passes.
Now the revised budget.
Now the revised budget.
So thank you. I have for your approval tonight, the 2016, 2017 annual budget revision. You have copies of this entire budget in your packets, but I just want to highlight some of this information as well. First of all, the revised budget process is something that we do throughout the year, most specifically after we have enrollment projections, after we see any resolutions to state funding, as well as getting about halfway through the year, we take a look at where our expenditures are and where some program changes are, and so that brings forward this revised budget. We do ask for your approval as part of this revised budget, so this then now becomes the set for moving into the audit process. Really, there are three factors that the revised budget summary reflects, one is revenue changes, things tied in with state funding and enrollment changes, expenditure changes, as well as some other, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Revenue updates, really, there are four categories, and three that are large, that are most impactful on this. The voluntary pre-kindergarten program, as we've talked about multiple times, was a new program after we set the budget, we received notice of that in August, and so both, so the revenues that are associated with that were built in, that's about $900,000 of the revenue that's accounted for that. There's also enrollment projections, so based on the enrollment projections and where we end up with our average daily membership at the end of the year, once we had our October 1 counts, we had a better guess on, or better estimate on enrollment, so we saw an increase of about $600,000 tied in with that. And then with our fund to our nutrition services, the fresh fruit and vegetable program was a program that we received the grant for after the budget was approved in June, or at that same time or after that was set, so that program is also included here, as well as we take a look at miscellaneous adjustments throughout grants, funds, and title programs and things like that. Expenditure update, really, is the same things. It's the voluntary pre-kindergarten program, which the revenue is offset by expenditures, the fresh fruit and- the fresh fruit and vegetable program in that, as well as some other miscellaneous adjustments when we're fine tuning the budget, looking at where some of those estimates came in. And then the other is kind of the magical piece and is probably the dollar amount that's most impacted on this sheet here that talks about the revenues and expenditures, and that is that OPEB bond refunding. And so it's one of those pieces where it shows up significantly in revenue. If it looks like we're increasing revenue from the adopted budget of $76 million to $98 million, that really is offset because we have the bond refunding, which we issued, it's getting late here at night, in January. Those bonds come due in November, so it actually shows up as revenue this year. Those will show up as additional expenditures next year. So even though there's a large increase of $22 million in revenue, that is not real revenue to the district and so that really is money that goes into an escrow account so we can pay off those bonds when they come due in November. Okay, so that shows up both in the debt service account as well as in the OPEB debt service. So the revenue shows in there, the expenditures will be realized in next fiscal year. So just kind of a highlight here, most specifically, we look at the general fund. So our adopted budget, we had projected $179,000 deficit to the budget, which we had accounted for. If enrollment increased, then we would use the contingency staffing, which we had that opportunity to do with the enrollment increase. And so really now, we're very close to a balanced budget in our general fund of $35,547 is what we're projecting at this point, ending the year. So that deficit was offset with the revenues as well as less expenditure increase than revenue increase as part of this revised budget. And then just looking high level, again, we have a significant portion of our funds, elementary and secondary regular instruction is number one, special education is number two, pupil support services and transportation is number three. This really is looking at all of those funds. And so while we see this percent of revised budget, things like the internal service fund, our debt service fund, our facilities and sites, so some of those pieces that are money that we've received some benefit of, and it's really kind of double booked when we talk about the insurance, is double booked into that internal services. So that's where we see some larger amounts here. So really, our percentage is much higher than the 36.2% that goes into elementary regular instruction, but wanted to give a picture of kind of our total budget of all funds for your purposes and review tonight. And with that, I would stand for any questions, if there's anything specific that you're interested in taking a look at. And either Bernice Humnick and I can respond to those or answer those at a later time too.
So that, just for myself personally, that chunk of OPEB money also sort of makes it hard right now to sort of compare apples to apples on the bottom line.
On the bottom line, yes. On the general fund, those aren't impacted in the general fund. So, yeah, so the $21 million revised budget, much of that is expected to be expended in next fiscal year, but the expenditure isn't realized in this year because those bonds come due this fall. So really, and for the most part, what we really do is we take a look at that comparison of the general fund, which is our general fund, our transportation, and then our student activities accounts are the three categories that we specifically look at when we look at general fund. Food services, the nutrition services. So here's another example of, right now, we're projecting that they're going to be running a deficit of $10,000 and spending down some of their fund balance here. Community education is built in here and they're assumed to be relatively flat. That's a program that we're watching carefully because as we transition into it being a Richfield program specifically, even though we've had revenues and expenditures associated with that, we see that program growing through some of our early childhood programming as well. So that will be something that we watch a little bit more closely and probably have more information for you moving forward too. So the internal service fund is our self-funded insurance program, so it shows $6 million, but that's, a lot of it's money in and money out, and we've seen that reserve continue to grow over time, providing more stability for the district.
Yep. Okay, thanks. That helps, just to kind of hit those highlights.
Yep. But again, there's not a windfall of revenue that is reflected by that.
So with that explanation, I will move the revised budget.
I'll second.
You have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and motion passes. We will now move on to internet service provider.
Good evening, everyone. In front of you tonight, I have a proposal for our internet service provider and a recommendation for moving forward. Traditionally speaking, an ISP service isn't a proposal that needs to come forward to the board, but to continue to model and show our fiscal responsibility as we evaluate all contracts and programs that we have and our relationship with partnerships that we have with other organizations, we wanted to bring this forward to you tonight to kind of show you that process that we're doing, in particular with our fiscal responsibility to the technology budget as well. So to give you a short background on a few pieces that impact the overall infrastructure when it comes to internet service. In 2003, Richfield Public Schools went out for a competitive bid on a wide area fiber network. This fiber network is now district-owned fiber that actually connects us into Edina and us into Bloomington. This network has been maintained by our district and utilized by ties for their internet service providing. Along with this partnership, as we built this wide area network going beyond Edina, there's a partnership between us and multiple districts that connects us all the way up to the 511 building. If you aren't familiar with the 511 building, that's the Minnesota Technical Institution where all mass communications for most of the metro actually hubs out of. So Comcast, RVIG, Zayo, your major internet service providers, serving your home residents as well, often come to that 511 building as a hub building and then shoot their services out beyond there. In addition to our background, Richfield's current network design provides redundancy, so multiple points of entry. So we actually have an internet pathway coming in from Edina and an internet pathway coming in from Bloomington, which means if something happens to that wide area network that cuts the fiber and the internet connectivity, it'll swap over to the redundant path coming through Bloomington and vice versa, so that our end users within the district don't see a discontinued service with internet services within our district. And why that is so important to Richfield Public Schools, if you look at a lot of the softwares and applications that we use, more and more of them are becoming cloud-based. So they're requiring that internet service in order to get to synergy, in order to get to our new e-finance system, in order to get to Blackboard Communications, and in order to get to Google Apps for Education. Richfield and Edina also has an agreement. We entered into an agreement early this summer to start looking at how we protect ourselves and our districts if there is a natural disaster or a massive disaster. So part of this agreement is an agreement between our districts that we're allowed to host equipment for disaster recovery at Edina's main data center. And Edina Public Schools actually hosts disaster recovery stuff within our data center here. So if a tornado went through Edina Public Schools and wiped out the community center where they have their data center, they can flip the switch and actually turn on their cloud-based services back on for their employees to get access to because they've got a disaster recovery location here in Richfield. And vice versa, we have equipment over in Edina if something were to happen to us. The other piece of information that's valuable to know is that as Hennepin County is doing a lot of mass transit infrastructure projects, looking at light rail, they have a larger wide area network expansion going on where they want to provide fiber connectivity to every single stoplight within Hennepin County. As they're doing their fiber network expansion, they're including school districts in the conversation and providing opportunities for fiber within their pathways, which Richfield is a part of that conversation and is actually getting some dedicated fiber pairs in the light rail line that's going through Eden Prairie. The end result of that could allow for district-owned fiber connections directly to the 511 building and some other pathways into other internet connectivity locations. Some very specific background related to our current internet service. So Richfield has been using ties as an ISP provider for over 10 years. We also use E-Rate. E-Rate is a way that we get reimbursement and subsidize our telecommunications. So E-Rate requires a bid on ISP services and any telecommunications services whenever those contracts end. What happens in that process is districts file a federal 470 form. That form goes out and publicly publicizes that our contract is up and any telecom provider can provide a response to what those services are that we need. Ties has launched a new network design, so this is also important to know as Ties is going through and reevaluating all the programs that they provide. They've also reevaluated the current model of service that they provide districts with internet services. So they launched later this year a new pricing model and structure for tie services as well as a new fiber internet service network. And as we evaluate these different things and different aspects of an internet service provider, it's also important to know the bandwidth that we currently use. So we currently have a 1 gig bandwidth connection with ties. We currently utilize about 400 megabits of that 1 gig bandwidth on a regular basis. It's kind of where we peak out. But there's also the consideration of what is this going to look like as we expand our personalized learning model and one-to-one devices. So it's important to know that many districts that have moved to a one-to-one model, especially in our neighboring districts, typically are starting to peak out at 1 gig or just over the 1 gig bandwidth mark. So we wanted to, as we processed through this and we go through some of the evaluations that we went through, we wanted to look at the expansion, the ability for us to be flexible as we look at new digital learning models that come in, and how do we continue to meet the needs of us now in Richfield and in the potential near future. So if we look at the selection criteria, part of the E-Rate process is cost has to be the highest factor when you're evaluating these bids. So cost was the highest factor in there. Just some quick breakdowns, Richfield receives about 80% reimbursement from E-Rate. Another funding source that we receive, because we are a Ties member, is whatever cost is left over, we receive about 40% of that remaining cost as equity aid from the state of Minnesota. One of the other selection criterias that was in there was around selection criteria or, excuse me, technical solution. And when we talk about technical solution, we wanted to make sure that we maintain redundancy. So if one line of goes down, we can still maintain that internet connection coming into our district. We wanted to look in that technical solution for the ability for expansion as we look at potential one-to-one models in the future, which could potentially push us beyond a gig of bandwidth. We also wanted to look at the utilization of Richfield's owned fiber network. So we own this mass wide area network of fiber. How can we utilize the investment that we've made in that network? And we also wanted to utilize and ensure that our connection with our disaster recovery site over in Edina would maintain. So if Richfield went down, we could flip the switch and have our services still up and running through the Edina data center. So if we look at the bid evaluation that was also in your packet.
Sorry, Anthony, on the last slide, you mentioned the subsidies of the funding sources, E-Rate and the Minnesota Equity Aid. There are no caps to that, as long as we go through the process?
Correct. So the 80% reimbursement from E-Rate, that's defined by our free and reduced price lunch count. So you get a tiered schedule based on what our count is, and because of where our count is, we have traditionally been at 80% reimbursement. The last piece that I did not mention in there is the ease of transition, so moving from one service provider to another service provider. The bids that came in, we had four of them that came in, Comcast, Zayo, Ties, and RVIG. One thing that's important to point out is Comcast, Zayo, and RVIG provide internet, they are the internet service providers. Ties is not by nature an internet service provider on their own. They are a reseller of internet service providers. So they actually resell RVIG, Zayo, Comcast, and other products back to districts through their private hybridized network. When we look at costs, you can see that RVIG came in at the lowest cost, Ties came in at the highest cost.
Is that because of the resale structure?
It's actually not on the resale structure. So right now, we pay close to $40,000 a year to Ties for internet service. And one thing that they were very diligent on is trying to structure their new internet service, which would provide a slew of additional features districts could have as well with their network, at about the same cost or slightly under the cost that they were currently providing districts. So when they provided us with their bid response, I believe they came in at about $36,000 per year. You do have a sheet in front of you with all the bids and pricings that I'll talk a little bit about in a second. And so the new bid came in at slightly under where they're currently at, but definitely significantly higher than RVIG, Zayo, and Comcast. When we talk about technical solution, Ties and RVIG were the only two vendors that provided a response that would also include a redundant connection. So we would have two pathways coming in, so if one goes down, the other one stays up. Comcast, when they presented what their structure would be, it was one point of entry into the district, but they did have some resiliency built in. So there's a five-mile segment of connection between the hub where it comes out of Comcast into us, where if that line gets cut, the district goes down. Their recommendation for a second point of entry is actually to utilize a second service provider, which makes some sense because you don't have all your eggs in one basket. But the challenge with that is you're now doubling the cost and working with two internet service providers to provide that double connection within your district.
Would we also lose the subsidy on the second one or that is the E-Rate and the Equity Aid, is that, would they?
It would apply to both. So you could add them together and reduce it by 80%. Vendor capabilities and support, looking at support models that come along with the networks that's provided. Zayo came in at the lowest on that. We do have some background with Zayo. When Access Communications came and bought our, Access Communications was the company that originally built our fiber network, and three years ago, when I came on, they were sold to Zayo and we were in a long heated negotiation, contract battle with Zayo to determine who has ownership of fiber and conduit pieces within there. It came out to a good resolution, but there's definitely been some challenges along the way. Ease of transition, again, Ties and RVIG came off the highest with the ease of transition, talking about IP address space. There's a lot of things that go along with this transition and maintaining or getting IP addresses because you have to, as a school district, we need Class C IP addresses, which means we have to do a lot of work with the FCC. And so it's how will the vendor provide support with us acquiring those IP addresses and transitioning from potentially existing IP addresses to new IP addresses? And so you can see the grand totals at the bottom. When we talk about recommendations, so the Richfields Technical Team, we met with all these vendors, they kind of gave us schematics on how they would design this and build this. After all the data came in, the recommendation was to move to RVIG for internet services. Their recommendation or their proposal that they provided us would utilize the district's network topology to provide the redundant connections, also the connection into Edina. It also allows us, again, to have that connection with two points of entry and allow for possible expansion in the future and the ability to gain multiple points of service delivery. So what I mean by that bullet point specifically is the 511 is one hub where internet services can come out of. There's actually another communications hub down in Shakopee. RVIG actually owns fiber and telecommunication networks all the way down and inside that Shakopee hub. So while we wouldn't initially have a secondary redundant line going to that Shakopee hub, we have the ability at some point to connect in there, which means if the 511 building goes up in flames, we won't be completely shut down on our internet services because we can have another direct path coming out of the Shakopee communications hub. And it also came in at the lowest cost. So if we look at the cost that came in, Ties, and we looked at specifically a 36-month contract, so Ties is $36,309 a year. Zayo came in at $18,000 a year. Comcast came in at about, just under $21,500 a year. And RVIG came in at $16,200 a year. And that was on a 1 gig connection. If I bump it up to a 2 gig connection, because we were looking at what would we have to do if we needed to expand to a to do if we needed to expand to a higher bandwidth, jumping up to a two-year connection would be $20,400 a year, which is still less than a one-gig connection with Ties. Arvig, if we go and look at it specifically with E-Rate, that would be $3,240. The Ties proposal with E-Rate and Equity Aid would be $4,357. Moving out of Ties would not automatically grant us Equity Aid, so the caveat with receiving Equity Aid is you have to be part of a collaborative or a consortium with multiple public entities in order to receive that. We are exploring some potential opportunities with some other districts that could form telecommunications agreement, which would then provide us the ability with Equity Aid. But even looking at without Equity Aid, Arvig comes in with just E-Rate at less than what Ties would propose with Equity Aid and E-Rate. If we got into a situation where we could get Equity Aid with the Arvig proposal, we would be down to $1,944 per year for Internet services, providing the same quality of service that we're currently receiving with the Ties connection now. So at this time, I'll open it up for questions.
I think I know the answer to this based on the recommendation and what you've shared thus far, but even though we are a Ties member district, there's nothing that we really stand to lose by choosing to go with a different Internet services provider?
No, there's not.
Thank you.
Other than the perhaps temporary, but you have to plan on losing the Equity Aid subsidy?
Right.
Yeah, in terms of service and copyright.
Yep. In terms of losing the access to the Equity Aid, again, as I pointed out, we'd still have less than what we'd be paying with Equity Aid through the Ties partnership.
And two gigs will be plenty for a while?
Yes, so again, we're at 400 megabits, so we haven't come close to the one gig. So what we'd strategically do is we would go and get one-gig Internet connection. The reason why we, if you look at the pricing, you'll see pricing for 36 and 60 month at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, because that quote actually gets locked in for the term of the contract. So if we ever need to bump up to two gig or five gig or whatever at any time during our contract, we can do it at that price that they quoted us, and that's part of FCC 470 regulations for E-Rate. Other questions?
I will move that we approve the contract with Arvig as our Internet service provider.
I'll second.
You have a motion by Ms. Crackey, second by Mr. Paulus. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and motion passes. Now we will move on to the Richfield Middle School boiler replacement.
Fun. It's not very efficient.
Thank you. We're on boiler number two now in the last couple of years. So we had a boiler that failed at the middle school. It's the one that services the pool area. You have kind of the detailed information, but we're asking for your approval of that boiler replacement and installation. Total cost of the project is expected to be about $65,983. As your notes indicate, the boiler that was put in there in 2007 was one of the first generations of that boiler, and so there was just some challenges with that, so we've been able to negotiate a rate that is almost half price for that boiler replacement. We also are looking at some changes to the installation process. I talked with Dan because I know there are some questions about, that there is some additional work on that labor associated with that. Specifically, it's just a matter of, it's not that the installation caused the problems with the boiler, but while we're replacing the boiler, we have an opportunity to kind of right-size that and make that kind of at a higher level in installation as well. So that's where those two pieces of the contractor work for the installation is $45,200, and then the boiler would be just under $20,000. So asking for your approval this evening.
So $45,200 to install the $19,283 boiler. So are there more? Were you just saying that there's more involved than just the installation?
Well, it's the installation, but it's, they're going to redo the plumbing that's associated with that and all the pipe work that is connected in there just to make sure it's the most efficient, effective operation for that area. And keep in mind, it's a $20,000 boiler, but that's originally about a $35,000 boiler, so it's a little bit more balanced between those two pieces if we hadn't negotiated a better rate on that one.
I will move the item as presented.
I second.
A motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to board policies.
All right, so first read, policy 109, 109.1, which is distribution of non-school-sponsored material on school premises by students and employees. Each of these policies has undergone an analysis of MSBA model policy, new statutes, and been reviewed prior to first read from the board. Again, the goal is just to have this in front of you for the first time. If there are major changes, we'll make those prior to meeting number two and then look at three times through, and if there are just minor cosmetic changes, we'll look to move these forward next time. Distribution of non-school-sponsored materials, in our analysis, this actually is a very effectively-written policy. The one area to analyze and take a look at is to integrate technology. So most of what you'll notice in regard to our distribution of materials is related to paper copies. And so the only area we need to double-check for compliance, because actually this is in full compliance with current law and current recommended policies, are to double-check from a technological perspective the distribution of technology-based resources. Similarly, then, the guidelines of 109.1, walk through what the procedures we've laid out for that are and sort of walking through how one would go about requesting to be able to distribute materials if you are a student or an employee. Are there any questions about board policy 109 and guideline 109.1?
My question was just what you raised. It didn't feel particularly 21st century-friendly.
Well, it was written prior to the 21st century.
That is plain.
It's darn close, actually. Definitely looking at, it doesn't talk about distributing things from a technology perspective. You're going to hear the same thing from policy 980, but we'll get to that in a second. Other questions about 109? All right, so then, as we look at 110, chemical use and abuse, there are actually a reasonable number of areas that we already looked at in regard to guidelines for chemical use and chemical abuse to make sure that we were in full alignment with some of the changes. You'll notice on the sixth page of the policy, we updated, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, about seven or eight different statutes, which actually had just some word changing specific to medical cannabis, also protection of pupil records, and you'll see some small changes throughout, though most of that policy would stay the same to remain in alignment with statutes, even the new ones.
Can I ask on the inclusion of medical cannabis, presumably if someone is using medical cannabis and has a prescription and is taking and is using it under the, you know, advice and oversight of a physician, do we have a separate policy for someone, say, who is prescribed narcotic painkillers? You know, if we have an 18-year-old who might, I mean, what are the ages for someone to be prescribed things like this?
Now, we do have a policy on drugs that specifically addresses prescribed medications.
We do, okay.
However, we determined at that time, based upon input from, I think it was input from MSBA, potentially as well as our council, that medical cannabis was sort of specifically excluded, I believe, medical cannabis as a prescribed therapy that would be appropriate in our facilities, if I recall correctly, Steve?
Correct, and I'm going to need to review, going to need to review each of those.
Yeah, I tried to look for the one that referenced the other.
Thinking it's 104, which is referenced at the bottom.
Okay, thanks.
Board policy, drug-free workplace and drug-free schools.
I'll read those.
And so, and again, just looking at that first read piece, but definitely wanting to clarify the medical cannabis piece and also what that looks like.
Yeah. I mean, my sense of this is presumably that there's not a whole lot of precedent to really guide us in this area.
Right.
Yeah, probably not.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and then also policy 980, which we brought together with the 109, 110, because it's actually distribution of materials by non-school persons. And similarly, we looked at this one, and this one actually is also in full alignment, just needing that same check as 109 does, which is double-checking in regard to technology and technologically distributing materials. So if there is a process we need to make sure of from that perspective also.
Just curious how someone from outside the school would have access to, say, the official distribution lists to distribute? Or can just any, you know, or I suppose if I was misusing my district email and did a "to all," we've never had those, I'm sure. Never, okay. So I guess I can see it, never mind. I can see how it could happen electronically.
There is a component, the acceptable use policy in 107, that we removed two years ago that addresses misuse of communication to district-owned communication tools if that were to take notice.
Yeah, pure theory. Okay, thank you.
Question on, well, this might be, again, this might be the 21st century context, but, you know, we talk about permission to distribute materials on school district property. So, you know, obviously that, originally you think of that meaning physical property. Would that mean, would that sort of correspond to, you know, distributing through technological means? So mail lists would be sort of considered as school district property?
Or posting to social media pages could be another example that we should think about.
Right, so as we look to add the technology component, we'll also look to review the technology use policy and make sure that those are in alignment and we have the same language in both of those pieces. Anything else?
No.
All right, so we will look to work with the technology component of 109, 980, and we will do a larger overhaul of 110. So hopefully, we will see if we can have our distribution materials ready for next board meeting, and the other one might take a little bit longer.
So we will move on to donations.
All right, so Richfield STEM received donations through the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign, $134.61 from an anonymous donor and $105 from Michelle Peterson. STEM School also received $31.59 from the Kula Foundation, Coca-Cola loyalty donations. And Michelle McGee donated jump ropes to the Physical Education Program at STEM. Joan Haroff, P.E. specialist, says jump roping is an activity that the students really enjoy, so she is continuously trying to replace those that are worn or broken and really appreciates this donation. At the high school, Red Robin Restaurant has started a donation program for schools using the Kula loyalty program. Red Robin program, or Red Robin customers can choose a school to receive a donation. $2.76 has been deposited into the Random Acts of Kindness Fund via this program, and we're hoping for more in the future. The RPS Athletic Department has received donations from both the Quarterback Club and the Spartan Foundation. $9,097.62 was donated by the Quarterback Club for a variety of equipment used by the RHS football team in the 2016 season, and $4,676 was donated by the Spartan Foundation for the dugout fencing on the baseball field, and $500 was donated for the trap team. We feel very fortunate for the generosity of our donors.
I will move that we accept these generous donations with gratitude.
I'll second.
You have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus, any special? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and the motion passes. We move on to advanced planning and a legislative update.
So we have now had initial budget salvos sent down from the House and from the Senate. News is not great at the moment, although we don't have full details. Just as a reminder, the governor's budget comes in for the biennium at slightly over $700 million, which would include a 2% and 2% on the general formula. It would include 2% put aside to pensions, which was the TRA board recommendation. I'm going to emphasize that for a moment. So the TRA board oversees pensions across the state of Minnesota, and there is a gap between the funding of pensions for educators and the amount of funding needed to support the pensions for educators. The TRA board has suggested that employers, that would be Richfield Public Schools, for example, would increase salary put into pensions by 2%. And so one of the things that is likely in the omnibus bills from the House and from the Senate is those funds that is in the governor's budget. There's similarly money for voluntary pre-K, and there's money to reduce the special education cross-subsidy. Each of the House and Senate have proposed approximately $300 million for the biennium for schools, which sounds initially, $300 million, sounds like a very large number. However, if that includes the money for TRA pensions, that actually would not even cover that. And so as we think about what that could mean, if you look at the governor's budget, that would be a 2% increase for funds plus some other areas that would increase. If we are looking at the current House and Senate proposals, should something not show up in regard to TRA and funding pensions, it would functionally be the implementation of almost a half percent decrease in the funds available to us, to our students and to the classrooms in Richfield Public Schools. So they are very, very different proposals currently sitting at the legislature, which will be decided over the next set of months.
Steve, can I just clarify, the governor's proposal is, say, 2% and 2% on the general fund with an additional amount to cover the newly required increase in TRA funding?
Correct.
And the legislators are saying it's whatever percent and whatever percent, and, but smaller than two. But included in that is a requirement to fund the TRA, which will drain all of the increase down to less than we are.
That is my understanding, yes, yes. And obviously, more clarity around those bills will come out, but that is, in the current E-12 bill, unless there's funding from a different tax area of the legislature, that is exactly what it would look like. So which is a reminder for us why we have done things like be very conservative. So as we talk about things like directors and obviously reductions rather than expansions, or we talk about reducing our overall budget, we're utilizing conservative projections because when you're looking at possibly a small increase of funds, which creates a gap in revenue expenditures, if you reduce that to functionally a negative amount of dollars that we can put into classrooms and into teachers, that also has a clearly negative impact on the budget. So we're in a very ambiguous time at present.
Would it be fair to characterize, if indeed, the House or Senate proposal is relative to TRA is as we're understanding it, would it be fair to characterize that as an unfunded mandate?
That would be fair to characterize that, yes, as an unfunded mandate.
The counterpoint to that is that we've been chronically underfunding collectively for years.
Yeah. Well, right, so.
So we've been getting away, right, we've been getting away with a larger than should have been unfettered amount of funding.
Correct, so what you're saying is that we, as a state, have sort of been dodging a responsibility sometimes.
Correct, although we don't set the TRA funding, we don't direct the, we don't design the plan, we don't direct the investments.
Yes, but the legislature would be, the legislature would be mandating the school districts funded without providing the wherewithal for the school districts to meet that.
Yeah, the cause and solution is all of the legislation.
The additional component to keep in mind, MSBA, which is the board members' representatives, have acknowledged a need to increase the district funding, but they have also suggested that the employees should also be increasing some of their funding, and then also with the overall proposal of MSBA is that the state should cover that increase, and so money is not taken out of classrooms. AMSD has done the same thing, and MASAA. So MASAA, MSBA and AMSD, we'll see if I can get that tongue twister out, have all sort of aligned in their perspective of, let's also have that funded from a state perspective.
And if there are people watching this, what would be ways that they could help advocate for schools and for school funding?
So.
Along with us.
There would be a logical time to contact legislators, legislators in the Senate and in the House in regard to their perspective on school funding overall. Specific to this issue would be that specific funding, if an aligned increase in TRA funding is passed by the legislature and/or the governor, that that funding should also come along with that, separate from what is given to education overall.
Right, the required TRA funding should not be within the amount contemplated, otherwise it diminishes whatever the, you know, any recommended increase.
Good. Okay, so information and questions from the board. So information and questions from the board.
I have a question for some of you. The, let's see, so I've talked about the MSBA training sessions in the past, and I, so Christine and I went to a negotiations training. It was excellent to learn some of the quirks of language that show up in contracts and can, and create problems. We've since found an interesting case out of Maine, involving a serial comma.
Oh, yeah. Nice.
For all the grammar crazies out there.
It's getting a lot of press, that comma.
It is getting a lot of press, a labor dispute involving a serial comma. But there is another training course, the MSBA Phase 3 training for board members, and I have not attended it in the past, and I was considering it, it's April 18th. I don't know who else, you know, well, April 18th is in Maple Grove. I mean, of course, if you'd like to go to Marshall, or Rochester, or Thief River Falls, there are other dates available. Anyway, I just wanted to let people know, if we want to attend, we should probably let Beth know, so she can register us in time.
And I have, I have attended it. It was very good, as are the majority of the, of their training sessions.
I went to one last month for board officer training, and also found it very helpful.
Yeah. Very good.
I'll look at my calendar and see if I can do it.
I have a couple of things. So this Thursday, March 23rd, is the Empty Bowls event. It's really pretty neat. It's put on by the district art program. So students in Richfield schools have made bowls that you can then make a donation to get a bowl. And then Noodles &amp; Company and Patrick's Cafe have donated soup. So it's kind of a fun event. You get to take the bowl home, you make a donation. There will be Richfield Jazz Band and choir performing also. And so that's this Thursday from 5:00 to 6:30. And then I also had another opportunity to listen with Superintendent Unowski to the Richfield High School Improvement Proposals done by Mrs. Lentz, Social Studies, was it, is it Social Studies, or what's the name of, there's a name?
That was their Social Studies class.
It was their Social Studies class, okay. But it was very interesting. They gave, students gave PowerPoint presentations along the lines of Life 101, being an adult, enjoyment of school, and some other interesting things on short-term goal setting and clean schools. It was a great experience, and lots of good ideas, actually.
Each of the last couple of years, the Social Studies class has presented their ideas for improving Richfield High School. So they've been very interesting.
Very interesting. Okay. So we will move on.
I have a couple of things too. Yep, no, that's okay. Also, two things. Just wanted to publicly thank Commissioner Debbie Gotel from Hennepin County. We did a joint visit to the South Education Center with District 287 last week, and it was great to hear from students and staff there about their experiences, and discuss specifically with the commissioner, county support, and how county support is such a critical part to our 287 programs, and ways in which that could be strengthened. So really appreciate that opportunity. Also wanted to just publicly appreciate, the staff there mentioned how helpful and how improved their relationships have been with Richfield Emergency Departments in recent years. And, you know, student and staff safety is obviously a huge priority there, and they just, they mentioned that the police and fire departments have been really good partners to them in recent years. So wanted to share that, because I really appreciated hearing that. And then the other thing, I think a couple of us were probably there, the boys' basketball game last week, it was a har, oh, I saw you there too, Emma. It was a heartbreaker, but they fought so hard, and their comeback was so incredible in that section final. And so just wanted to appreciate the team for making it that far, and just, I think, how incredibly well they represented Richfield in that heartbreaker of a game.
It was great community support. Our side of the stands was packed.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Okay. So future meeting dates, we have April 3rd, Monday at 7:00 p.m., regular board meeting, and April 17th, Monday at 7:00 p.m., regular board meeting. Any suggested future agenda items?
Pack them all into this? Yeah.
We could have more presentations. As dense as possible, please.
We're just getting us ready for the summer months, where we only meet once, and so, you know, getting our muscles.
They're a little denser.
Strengthened.
If I was to reflect on my performance, I would say spacing things out effectively is one of the areas I could probably improve on, just a touch sometimes.
We were well set up.
He's trying to get us out earlier now, that isn't going to be nice.
Right, right.
Next time, right?
Exactly. I would guess that the next one will be a little bit shorter.
It's a good meeting.
So that is it? Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will move to adjourn.
I'll second.
You have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Kracki. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we adjourn.